Do you want to like power water?
Nope.
The most new everybody we've ever seen.
It'll be good.
Recycled kind.
What did he give you?
Vanessa.
No Vanessa, yeah.
Vanessa.
Yep.
A gift. A gift from the Juneteenth.
What you got there soldier?
Your shirt right there I'm giving for the Juneteenth. They don't got mediums for me dog.
I know we did, we're back.
How you doing? Is that a big enough one?
I don't know. They got big ones.
I just wanted to make sure Roy had them.
Thank you.
How are you sir?
How are you sir?
Awesome.
Chair will call the August 3rd, 2022 meeting of the City of Springfield City Council meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Phil Ginsy.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman De Senso. Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer. Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. We do have a few, three presentations. First one is from Juneteenth celebration. I don't know if someone's here for that.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Good evening.
You want us to state our names on this?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Don't touch the mic, it says it right there. Sharina Douglas, 4003 Pick Fair Road, Springfield, Illinois 62703.
Shamika Kirk Gregory, 3021 East Carpenter, 62702.
So, good evening again, everyone. We are here to be good stewards of the funds distributed to us for Springfield's 28th Annual Juneteenth Celebration. We are open to answer any questions, but for the sake of time, we do ask that any concerns be addressed with us at the end of the presentation. I believe this young lady behind Alderwoman Purchase is there, so when I tuck my ear, we can go to the next slide for me? Do we have, oh, let's see. I work for government, who knew? Is it red button? The two white arrows? The red mark?
We have it, it just doesn't work.
The red arrow, the white arrows to the right?
Yeah, if you want to go down there. Maybe it's not on.
There we go.
Hey.
Excellent. So it's a little jumbled here, but what we want you to understand that we know that Springfield is the home of what?
Lincoln.
There it is, it is the home of Lincoln. And thus, someone said it before, it's the home of Juneteenth. Now, Lincoln was born in Kentucky, wasn't born here. Galveston is the birthplace of Juneteenth, but this is the place where they both reside. This is the home of Juneteenth and the home of Lincoln. And we are here as the executive staff of what we have titled Juneteenth Incorporated. Juneteenth is so important to us that we have formulated into a business. Both Shamika and I are raised right here in Springfield. We are also mothers who are raising our children in Springfield. And we both have fond memories of Juneteenth celebration here in Springfield. And we want to make sure that our children's children, not just our children, but our children's children, understand the importance of Juneteenth. And that's why we want to ensure and make sure that this partnership continues, not just with us as organizers, but with you all, the city, elected officials and the city as a whole. We aim to make sure that we pay homage to those of us, those that came before us. Again, Juneteenth celebration started here in the 90s by One in a Million Incorporated. So we do want to thank those current, those founding members and current board members, specifically the CEO, Mike Williams. Our other partners include the Visitors Bureau with Springfield Tourism, City of Springfield, Illinois State Museum, the second Juneteenth Art Exhibit entitled "The War, The Migration", Lincoln Library, University of Illinois at Springfield Center for Lincoln Studies, Levitt Amp Springfield, Springfield Black Chamber of Commerce, and the Boys and Girls Club of Central Illinois. All of these partnerships allowed us to increase our attendance from last year over 30% with an estimated 15% of attendees being the first time participants. Current hotel data has yet to be reviewed. However, we did also, we doubled the amount of hotel room blocks from the previous year and nearly doubled the amount of paid vendors in the park. As we discussed, 20 years ago, this celebration started as a festival in Commoncocks Park with the organizers from One in a Million Incorporated. And we are seeking to expand that celebration through various sponsor and sponsorships and partnerships. We started off this year with a partnership with Lincoln Library on Wednesday, June 15th, with a community showcase led in part by the Tubman Garvey Historical Cultural Center. Additionally, our collaboration with DSI's Levitt Amp Concert Series drew an eclectically diverse audience to downtown Springfield on that Thursday. We expanded our stay-ins downtown as we continued our collaboration with Illinois State Museum and the UIS Center for Lincoln Studies as Friday featured both a lecture series and the Free-ish Block Party, as well as the art reception for the "The War, The Migration", which is currently will be, remain up through September 2nd. The two-day celebration commenced with an annual parade led by the Liberty Ride. The Liberty Ride is an organized relay of motorcyclists who transport copies of the Constitution, Bill of Rights, Declaration of Independence, and Emancipation Proclamation across the US and meet up in Washington DC. The ride and its riders' purpose is to inspire and remind us all of the critical importance of these essential writings and our country's foundations. The In-Park Festival included several live bands, a father-child basketball tournament, and had several food vendors and intricate and unique clothing. We want to specifically also make sure we shout out and thank the City of Springfield for displaying tremendous support during the In-Park festivities, parade participation, and being one of the highlights of the weekend. We would also like to acknowledge the help of Director of Public Works displayed as Mr. Harris was swift in his assistance in times of need. We understand the importance of sustainability and that some sponsorship from the city is not always possible, and we are continuously seeking diverse funding sources. This year, we can report that we matched the funds that were distributed to us by the city through T-shirt sales, sponsorship, parade, and vendor fees. We also understand in order to get the word out that Springfield is the home of Juneteenth, that we need to promote outside of the city. This year, this year, we did radio promo marketing throughout Central Illinois, as well as billboards and print radio and print ad commercials throughout Central Illinois. Now, the underlying goal of Juneteenth Incorporated is to eradicate racism through education of Juneteenth. And our development of our youth is vital to achieving this. And we are very proud to announce that we continued on our youth development program entitled Mr. and Mrs. Juneteenth. Mr. Juneteenth is Mr. Jamari Dassey and Mrs. Juneteenth is Ms. Terrianna Harris, both students of local public high schools. We understand the significance of encompassing not just a celebration, but also education into the importance and sharing the importance of Juneteenth. Now, we still need city support, again, not just from UAS elected officials, but from our businesses as well. Because in order for this to really truly be the home of Juneteenth, we all have to buy in. The fair is coming. In a few weeks, we are going to see signs everywhere welcoming state fairgoers, encouraging them to come into certain businesses and to participate and purchase. And we need that as well for Juneteenth, because if this is the home of Lincoln, he is the great emancipator, thus he has, this needs to be the home of Juneteenth. So if you have any ideas as far as sponsorship opportunities, ideas to expand Juneteenth outside of just downtown and the east side, we would love to come into other wards to make sure that, again, we all understand the significance of Juneteenth and how important it can be for all of us. It's a significant moneymaker for businesses, but more importantly, it will definitely change the culture of Springfield to unify us as a city and as a whole. We thank you for your support and we look forward to our continued collaborations in the future. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to congratulate you guys on a fantastic year. You know, to see this celebration really grow is fantastic. And I know that you guys have goals to bring some talent, some artists to help you with your regional attraction goals. So, you know, this year, I know last year was a little late with getting that payment. And I don't want that to happen again this year. So I encourage you and Mr. Dow to get together early, come up with that budget for that artist, and submit that early so we can get that out, so you guys can book. Because whenever you're booking artists, we want to do it, you know, some many, many months out so we can get that done. So I want to make sure that you guys, you know, have a direction in that for this year's sponsorship, next year's sponsorship that we'll be producing, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Connolly?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you both for coming back and doing this presentation. I know it kind of feels like, oh, you got to come in and ask again. But I got to tell you, it's so wonderful for us and then for the, and for the community at large to see the success of the event you put on and to kind of, it keeps this excitement and that energy going for next year. I was unable to attend this year, but I heard great things about it. Super thrilled to see you expanding and the growth you've done. Thank you so much and for taking the time to come in tonight and give us really a great presentation. And we got T-shirts. Those are from you or from Alderman Gregory, but appreciate that. That was very generous of you. And I do, I'll have to connect with you later because I have some ideas on other ways that we can maybe get some other sponsorships and partnerships going. So I'd love to reach out to you after the meeting.
Please, we welcome all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Purchase?
I would like to echo. You all did a fantabulous job over the summer. And one request I would like to ask, if you can put together a plan that you want to do so that we can kind of see it, just like Alderwoman Connolly said, expanding over in her ward, bringing more downtown. I was talking to our Executive Director, Kayla Graven, about doing more over the weekend. I know we have the Black 217 Restaurants, but we want to see more down there. And the businesses are wanting to come in and do more. We have one that offered to bring over food and stuff. So I want to bring it over just a little bit more. But good job. And thank you for working me too.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it and thanks for the update.
Thank you.
It was a great event.
Thanks for coming.
Next, we have an ARPA update by Ramona Metzger.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Ramona Metzger. I am the Comptroller in the Office of Budget Management. And I have been filing the quarterly compliance reports with the US Treasury for the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA as the acronym is, and the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, or SLFRF. This report is current as of activity through July 31st. There goes. It'll probably go like five pages. The Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Program, it's part of the American Rescue Plan, and it's delivered $350 billion to state, local, and tribal governments across the United States. And it's to support responses to and recovery from the COVID-19 public health emergency. And based on per capita, the City of Springfield received $33.8 million. With the March 2021 creation of ARPA, SLFRF, to provide governments such as Springfield the resources needed to respond to the pandemic and its economic effects to result in a more equitable economy during the recovery, these four categories of allowable fund uses include municipal revenue loss, water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, premium pay, and responding to the public health emergency and its negative economic impacts. The US Treasury expenditure category that the city files its compliance report with is under the expense category of revenue replacement for a project expenditure. And that category is provision of government services. And there are some very important restrictions on the use. We may not deposit funds into a pension fund. We may not deposit funds to finance a reduction in net tax revenue, such as passage of a law with a tax reduction. And we may not use the funds directly to service debt, satisfy a judgment or settlement, or contribute to a rainy day fund. It is the most flexible category for reporting purposes. However, we still must follow the uniform guidance for federal awards, Title II of the Code of Federal Regulations, Part 200. The Code of Regulations establishes uniform administrative requirements, cost principles, and audit requirements for federal awards to non-federal entities. A big part of, sorry, a big part of 2CFR 200 is related to procurement. The city was awarded $33.8 million, and that is the amount of revenue that our award, that's the amount of loss that we can take against our award. We follow the US Treasury's calculation based upon a growth adjustment of 5.2 based on the preceding fiscal year to the pandemic, which is 2/28/19, and the total estimated revenue loss of 33.8. This slide, the snippet is from the US Treasury report that was filed in quarter, in April 30th for Quarter Two. This slide represents a timeline with the receipt of the May 2021 and June 2022 equal tranches from US Treasury. As a reminder, all funds must be expended or encumbered by December 31st, 2024, and all funds spent by the end of calendar year 2026. For the Treasury reporting for calendar year 21 and for Quarter Two of fiscal year 23, no, for calendar, Quarter Two, Calendar Year 22, we had 1.9 million of council-approved expenditures that were reported. As of July 31st, the cumulative expenditures were 7.12 million and cumulative obligations included 21.1, leaving an amount of award not yet budgeted of $5.5 million. The mayor's original proposal had these five pillars: infrastructure modernization, building stronger, safer neighborhoods, job creation and economic development, clean, reliable water, and reimagining Lincoln's hometown. Council has approved 12.3 million of infrastructure modernization, including 5.8 of sewer projects and 6.5 of road projects. The ordinances are included, and so you can note that those are there for all of the related ordinances to the various projects. Under the pillar of building stronger, safer neighborhoods, council has budgeted 7.86 million, and there's an allocation recommendation of 1.2 million for police-in-car systems. And again, the ordinances are referenced. Excuse me. Under the pillar of job creation and economic development, the council has budgeted $527,000 with a four-point, or a $4.5 million mayoral allocation recommendation. That remaining allocation is for broadband access to eliminate the digital divide throughout the city, which Julia will be speaking on shortly, and workplace and business development. In addition, there are homeless initiatives of $2 million, which are in separate HUD-ARPA funds. $6.4 million has been budgeted for various clean, reliable water projects. And recommendations of use for the remaining allocation include enhances to cybersecurity and technology. With the reimagining of Lincoln's hometown pillar, the city has supported several events and has budgeted funds remaining for event support and community revitalization grants, as well as marketing podcasts. And there is a transfer of revenue loss of $400,000 that council also has approved. So, in summary, the total ARPA award of $33,804,130 less budgeted to date of $28,259,630 leaves an unbudgeted available balance of $5.5 million, or 5 million, 544,000, 540, five and a half million. We have expended to date 7.2 million, and our total obligated to date is 21.1. That again brings us to that total budgeted amount of 28.3 billion. And that brings me to the end. If there's any questions, if my voice will hold out.
Any questions or comments? Alderman Gregory?
I'm following the night, Mayor, thank you. For the, so just a comment, the workforce and business development, I know we've, you know, we tried to do some things with that, but I'm really looking forward to getting some of that rolling, I think that's important. But I did have a question on our, on the community revitalization grant that we passed in this recent budget and when we would see some motion on that for the community? I know you might not have the answer.
Yep, I do not have that answer. That would probably be Director Doll. Or. He's wanting to know what the other community revitalization grants, what those may be spent on or what's going to be proposed for those.
Yeah.
Yes.
For the community revitalization grants that we did pass, I know I spoke a little bit with the mayor and I thought Ravi and I was going to do it, but I know Public Works is. So my question is, is when will we have that program developed and rolled out to the community?
We have it available. I'm not sure exactly who's working on the program, but I can get you the dollars involved if you want that.
I'd rather get it rolling first, then I'll go with the dollars.
You don't want me putting together the program, but we'll, I'll talk to the mayor and to Oped and we'll see who's working on that.
I appreciate it.
Get you an answer.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman Redpath?
Under the four categories allowable for uses, there's a premium pay. Can you explain that?
The premium pay, we, that is one of the uses. There are, there were originally some caveats related to, there was a standard of value where we, as a city, we made more money than what the premium pay. Phil, can you explain that better? Sorry.
So, put simply, Alderman, premium pay was additional pay for employees who were here working at the city during the pandemic. And there were certain restrictions on that, certain amount, you couldn't be paid over a certain amount. That's really what it is, to answer your question. Now, we've not gone that way because the most flexible pillar is revenue replacement. That allows you to spend it on pretty much anything except for those things that she put up on the screen. There were discussions had on premium pay and that wasn't, that wasn't something that, that there was a desired use of simply because, as I understand it, it was felt that the money was better used putting it out there in the community and doing programs and things with it.
So you did not use it for premium pay?
We have not used a dime for premium pay, no. No, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ramona.
Thank you.
Next, we have a broadband update report.
Brought the crew with you. I know. If we can, there we go. Good evening, I'm Julia Frevert. I'm the Communications Director for the City of Springfield. I'm here to update the council on the city's broadband initiative and our efforts. I'm joined by some of our committee members. Tom Chi, who is our Smart Cities Program Manager. He's also my co-chair for the committee. We're going a little fast. So, and then some of the committee who's taken part. So, I'd like to start off by acknowledging some of our partners that we've been working with. We were fortunate to receive the State of Illinois Technical Assistance Grant that allowed us a 14-week program to work with some city leaders and community members to put together this broadband initiative. We started this initiative actually back in 2018, 2019, when we did two feasibility studies and we partnered with digital authorities to do that. We then in 2020, we all know what happened with the pandemic. And then, so our work on the broadband initiative was paused. In 2021, we resumed our efforts and partnered with UIS and the Urban Action Network to do surveys in the community, specifically targeting, we did it community-wide, but we wanted to target certain ZIP codes. And then, earlier this year, we were awarded the Technical Assistance Grant through the State of Illinois. And we had the opportunity to partner with the Ben Institute, the Connecting for Heartland and U of I Extension to help us move forward with this initiative. So this was our broadband cohort. Most of them are sitting behind me. We have, also from the city is Donna DeValantis. She is our Grants Coordinator. Dr. Stacy Grande, she was with SIU. Unfortunately, we lost her to Springfield. She has moved on out of state, but she represented the medical community and research. Shelley Heidemann, who is Executive Director for the Faith Coalition for the Common Good, who's also here. Marcus Johnson, President and CEO of the Urban League, who's behind me. Kathy Lee, she is the Principal of Lawrence Adal. She retired at the end of July, and so we have been in touch with the new principal. We look forward to joining our commission. Mike Murphy, the President and CEO of the Greater Springfield Chamber of Commerce, and Alderman Williams. To recap where we were with broadband is that, again, we were looking at the is that, again, we were looking at the city's utility and its use of fiber. The utility has its own fiber, and it supplies it to various businesses, including the medical district. In 2019, as I said, we did the two feasibility studies. The pandemic allowed us to pause. We went back out for the surveys, and then earlier this year, we took part in the 14-week program to get us back on track to Institute of Broadband Initiative. As we all know, we discussed the digital divide well before the pandemic, but I don't think it was until the pandemic. We all feel that, that we truly understood what the digital divide is. We saw it when we were forced to go remote. We were forced to do schoolwork. We were forced to stay home. We were forced to visit the doctors online, and we just realized that we were not equipped across our city that we were able to do that. It brought forward the racial and economic disparities, that a cell phone does not make someone connected. The affordability and accessibility issues, the portents, but lack of fiber throughout the city, and an economic and educational equity through the lens of broadband. So, when we get into this topic, they say, "What is internet access?" This is the FCC's internet definition of internet access. It's a lot of words. It's a lot of bigger words. So, I simplified it basically that it's accessing information and services online, but not through a mobile device, because a mobile device does not make someone connected. This is a very important slide to look at. So, as stated previously, broadband is still defined as a high-speed internet access via multiple types of technology. FCC defines minimum internet access speeds as 25 megabits per second for download, with 3 megabits per second for the upload. And that is shown on the left-hand side of your screen. So, you look that, wow, Springfield's pretty well-covered. That standard was set in 2015, and Tom Chi pointed out that's when the iPhone 6 came out. So, fast forward to today, what makes us actually better equipped in order to compete in today's market, to have a better economic development, to attract new businesses, attract a younger, new workforce, and to get us optimal speeds? We're just looking at 1 gigabit per speed for download and upload. And so, the image on the right shows what Springfield actually is at, looking at it that. So, what the committee has learned over all of this is that there's an affordability versus accessibility, which means accessibility is readily available. However, it's the affordability and access to devices that can be the obstacle. It's not simply about connecting homes with the internet. It's planning to involve digital literacy and connecting homes with devices. It's also workforce development. There is a big demand for running fiber, constructing broadband, but the workforce is very slim. It's a high demand. Our city may need one... More than one solution, and the internet really isn't a luxury. As some people say, it's a necessity. The State of Illinois and the Benton Institute really pushed every city that participated in this plan. There was... I should back up to say, we were the only city out of the six communities that were awarded this Accelerate Grant for the first time that the state has done it. We were the first city, and we participated with the other county... Some of the counties. So, they really pushed us to put out a vision that government can sit there and keep working towards something, but you really have to have your plan in place and a vision to work for. So, I did want to read this vision because the committee really stands behind it and what we're working towards. It says, "By 2024, all residents, anchor institutions, and business locations in Springfield, Illinois will have access to a minimum of one affordable, equitable broadband network that is capable of providing benefits of current and future economic, social, civic, educational, health, and entertainment applications for households and businesses in our city. By 2025, all Springfield residents will have access to affordable computing devices for their homes and businesses, along with free resources, including technical assistance and digital education courses, to help all residents advance personally and professionally. And through these initiatives, 100% of the city of Springfield residents will have access to broadband, personal devices, and digital education by 2026." And what we're saying here is not that because we build it, they will have... You know, they will sign up for it. We want to build it so anybody, no matter where they live, will have a choice to access it. So, they will have the ability to have broadband if they choose. They will have the ability to take digital literacy courses if they choose, and they'd have the ability to have a computing device that's affordable and helps them out if they choose. And last thing that the committee worked towards is to become better familiar with providers and services. We actually talked to different internet providers. We talked to people who were here locally and those who are looking to service this area as well, just to educate ourselves on the topic of broadband and what we are doing. So, now, we're going to just get into what are our next steps, and why are we standing here talking in front of the city council about our efforts?
Hi, good evening. Tom Chi. First of all, I just want to say, when Julia mentioned, we were talking about the FCC definition of broadband being outdated, and I said, "That's when iPhone 6 came out. If you have an iPhone 6, I am not calling you outdated." Okay? But... So, I get to do the fun part. So, I believe in making decisions based off of data, and it's important to visualize the data. So, we created a city broadband dashboard that visually supports the city's own research, surveys, and data gathering, combined with the research that we received and data that we received through the State of Illinois and ESRI. So, this dashboard is not currently live, but it should be within the next few weeks. But it's going to be a public-facing, interactive dashboard, a resource to help understand broadband services in the community. There's going to be three main tabs that you see up at the top there. So, we have the main dashboard, which we'll break down further. You have the heat map, and you'll have a equity lookup tool. So, currently, if you look at the wards listed on there, the dashboard is based off of the current ward maps, but we'll have an option for you to toggle between the current ward map and the 2023 ward maps. I have to control this, don't I? Thank you. I don't know who changed it. So, this tab here, this is the heat map tab. So, this creates a visual reference of the disparity in households with no broadband access, with the darker shades representing the most disadvantaged census tracts. And this correlates with the maps that Julia had showed earlier when we looked at a lack of gigabit symmetrical speeds in areas of Springfield. Okay, so, this is the foundation of our work and what we are striving to improve. We will continue to work from the worst-performing down, but that's not to say if we come up with a solution that could be scaled to other census tracts and wards quicker, that those census tracts and wards may not have to wait. But this is our starting point. This is what the data pointed to as the ones that were the most disadvantaged. Something to note, Census Track 14 is excluded because that's primarily businesses downtown, and we'll move those efforts to the Office of Planning and Economic Development. So, the top five worst-performing census tracts in Springfield are reflected on these tabs here. But there are Census Tracks 16, 24, 26, 9, and 1. And then, to kind of give a brief overview of this particular category on the dashboard, so we're looking at without any type of internet connection. So, at the top there, you'll see the number 5. So, Census Track 39.01, only 5% of households do not have an internet connection, as opposed to Census Track 16, where 43% do not have access to any kind of connection. And then, that 19.6 that you see on the right side there, that represents the average percentage of households with no internet access across all census tracts in Sangamon County. Same thing on this one, just a different category. So, we're looking at the lack of computer hardware. And I won't go through all the details here. We can... Whenever we have the dashboard live, you're more than welcome to click away. And then, this one is the percent of households without a cellular data plan. All right, so, through our research and collaboration with our partners, we... The scope of work is going to involve... Is going to be... Go beyond providing broadband access. In order to be successful, the work also has to include a digital literacy program, which includes education on what else you can do with internet. It's not just browsing anymore. Device acquisition. So, we have to have the necessary hardware to connect to the internet and process the data. And then, we have workforce development, volunteering, community partnerships, as well as public and private partnerships. And then, at this time, I will pass it back over to Julia to wrap up.
For the committee's next steps, we decided to... We know community engagement is really key in educating about broadband. So, many of you might be familiar with the Ring Doorbell conversations that have been going on with the R3 grant. Through the R3 grant, they received some Ring doorbells, but then that has... There has spurred the conversation that there's many residents across the city who are interested in accessing Ring doorbells, neighborhood associations. And so, the Office of Planning and Economic Development is working on a Ring Doorbell grant program, a home safety program, that should be ready by the end of this month. So, we decided that that would be a good way to start holding a couple of community forums to talk about the Ring doorbells. However, the Ring Doorbell program is not successful unless you have internet access. And so, that's how we would also introduce the community to the Affordable Connectivity Program, which is a program that would allow $30 a month to those who qualify to get internet access or to potentially take some money off their bill. So, in these community forums, we would be rolling out the Ring Doorbell program, talking about the ACP in addition to talking about the city's broadband initiative. We're also working on our grant submissions for this broadband since now we have a pretty solid plan in place. We've been working with purchasing, the city's purchasing department, and Amanda Long, in creating an RFP and issuing it. Our goal is to have that out by the middle to the end of September. We realize the RFP may require multiple solutions for the city, not just one. We also feel that this committee needs to be broken down into subcommittees, and our focus area is going back to the scope that Tom Chi mentioned. And of course, we will be coming back to the city council with our request for funding after we receive responses to the RFP. You have any questions for us or for the committee?
Alderman Williams.
Yes. Well, first, I want to, I guess, thank you, Mayor. You know, I really appreciate it being the Alderman that got chosen to be, to work with this team. It really broadened a whole lot of things. I was the Alderman that was saying, "Why is I-3 broadband only building out west?" You know, I can remember that argument, and, "Why ain't they digging up our yards?" And how are we... And then, when I saw the map, I just had fits. But it's through this experience here and learning from people like Representative Murphy, or I'm sorry, President Murphy, that I've learned what a sound business decision is, and that it's about business. So, what they were doing was smart, business-wise. And even though it was all northwest and southwest, and they didn't start east like I wanted, the map showed we were so far behind. It was just the growth I got from serving. I really appreciate the mayor for allowing me to participate and be a part and being able to get a relationship with Mr. Murphy. I think I want to just thank the team. We did this 14 weeks straight with other communities around Illinois, and that's where I really picked up how inner-city and rural communities have so much income. And in broadband, it's just one of many, you know, different things. Shelley and Marcus, you both did an excellent job because you know the community so well. You know 62701, 62702, 3, you know, and all the target areas that these census tracts identify because you have been doing the work through your agencies for so many years. And then, my hats go off to you, Julia and Tom, because you had to bring all this together and bring all of us together and organize this report. And I know that had to take time, and I know we just gave a report, and we kind of went through it. But trust me, it just skimmed through what we did. We had 14 weeks of hard, several hours of really, you know, digging through. I think the greatest experience, and I'll let the other Aldermen ask questions, was being able to interview the providers, because then I got to know how they were thinking. I found out the status of Springfield, where we were, and surprisingly, we wasn't that bad off. You know, I could quit fussing with the mayor about, "Hey, let's take downtown, you know, broadband, and what we have, and get it east," you know? Because my whole thing was my COVID experience that had made me aware of how disproportionate things were, how the gap, the digital divide was real. You know, from talking to Jennifer Gill and people in the school district, they had did their part. These principals that was with us, they helped me understand, well, the school had no choice. The problem fell apart is when they went home. When COVID stopped the school and the classrooms, and they were home, and my constituents were dropping. You know, only two students old. The third child is on an alley fella, and it crashed. That's when it was real, real to me. So, I appreciate the experience. This report is so important, and it is a good starting point. And I just want to thank the team. So, thank you for putting up with me for 14 weeks, every Thursday at 8:30 in the morning.
Alderman Donna.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate this update. Alderman Williams, to kind of respond to something you said. It's not just I-3 broadband. I-3 broadband came through some of Ward 9, and then, just a few weeks later, guess who came knocking? AT&amp;T. So, they tore up all the yards yet again. So, and a conversation for a different day, and probably behind this offline here is to talk about why a certain company that's boring through Ward 9 presently is filling the holes, not with dirt, but with sand. And people are wondering why, how they're supposed to grow grass in sand. But anyway. Has there been any discussion by the group? And Mr. Chi, I appreciate your comments about the data because it is important. Has there been any discussion about getting... Encouraging the companies, when they do come through areas, to coordinate and do it together so that we don't have this serious issue of people being disrupted in many, many different ways and being angry and so forth?
Yes, we did discuss that because it did come up a few times on that, and to jump topics. But I think that's also one of the pieces that our new fellow is also looking at, is our city services and how that... How to better utilize our systems to understand when permits are being issued, that this is happening on this block when another one might be coming through. So, it is something that we're looking at is to better utilize. It might not be with this group, but that is definitely an issue that we want to address.
And I understand the focus obviously has to be areas that are... That don't have any service or don't have service that's up to par. I understand that, but it's just... It creates...
Yes.
Probably a discussion for a different day. But getting to the bottom of your list on the next steps, do you have any anticipated costs or what the ask will be of the city?
We will have soon... I think we estimated between 2... Where's that? 2,000 to 4,000 per house. It costs about... Per house to get it broadband accessible. So, if you want to use that. And then, we, depending on how many houses in that, that would give us a stronger... So, if you want to go on the high end and say, estimate $4,000 a house in a certain area, that's what it would be.
Do you have any idea what that would equate to as a whole?
Yeah, I... We could get... Not exactly. I think 3 million was what we were looking at for our first initial. That does not include devices. That is strictly, we are running and looking at the broadband.
Thank you. That's a big number. Thank you.
Alderman Repath.
Have you identified a funding source where we're going to get this money from?
ARPA would be one of the funding sources. Of course, CWOP possibly would just... In terms of building out the fiber, there's other potential funding sources with CDBG, potentially cannabis, and then, that's separate from any grants that we're writing for this program.
We can UCB...
I can't speak if we can, but that is something definitely we would be... I would look at. look at.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Julia. Definitely I've heard about the Ring doorbells. It has created such an excitement, but I think that's a good thing in names of safety and, and, you know, people in their homes, you know, just feeling safe. And, you know, that Ring doorbell does, does give them that. And I think this broadband is going to play in, play a part. The area that you spoke on, R3 area, it's probably our poorest area of the city, I would be willing to bet without looking. But, so they're going to need some of that broadband to connect with these Ring doorbell devices that the R3 grant identifies. So I'm happy to hear that we got some motion going on that and I'll deliver that message to our constituents as well. Thank you.
Alderman Purchase?
Thank you. I have two questions, but thank you for the presentation. Do you know how long this process would take to get through certain portions of the city? So would it be like a month or two months, depending on the households?
Wouldn't know until we get our responses from the RFP. And so then if we put out the RFP in September, the providers, providers all requested at least 60 days to respond to our request. So we'd have a better idea on timeline then.
And then once you do have that timeline, I assume you would be getting that before we start the community engagement to inform people of what's going on? How will that work? Will you?
So initially, the community engagement, I think, was just more on the Ring doorbell side and the ACP program and to talk about what the city's goal was with the broadband. And then after we look at the RFPs and what our plan is and come to the city council, I think that's when we look at doing another set of community forums, especially in the areas that we would be doing the work to say, this is what's happening, what's going on. And I think it also, to go back to Alderman Donlin's point about the digging in the areas, I think that's what we were discussing also with the Urban League of the Workforce Development. It would be nice to have crews that are from Springfield who are, you know, know the community and understand the importance of what we're doing here and, you know, have a better probably relationship than some of the contractors that are coming in. So to hopefully help minimize some of those gaps and then create a workforce that can go elsewhere.
Yeah, and I just have one suggestion, since we hear a lot about the digging and people saying they didn't know about it. If we can have like door hangers or something that we go out and place on people's doors so that way they can see it when they go to get their mail, to say, oh, something is coming next week or this is how long it's going to be.
Yes, and less of a sales-looking piece, that I think that's kind of the issue. It's been more of a sales piece than a actual education to say this is happening.
Okay, that was my only suggestion.
Any other questions or discussion?
I don't know if anybody from the committee wants to say anything.
Elise, introduce yourself and share with us anything you like on the broadband initiative.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mayor. Mike Murphy, I'm with the Greater Chamber, Greater Springfield Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I want to thank the mayor for asking me to do something and without telling me, it was a 14-week commitment every Thursday morning. But I want to address a little bit that has been discussed before is accessibility versus affordability. And I think this is a big deal. We have better coverage than I anticipated in the city of Springfield. On the first slide that Tom talked about earlier, about meeting federal guidelines, you know, my neighborhood just meets that. We do not have the one up and one down as well. But I was surprised at the number of places it had. But what was disappointing was the number of residents who have access to internet that are not using the internet. That was my most troubling thing. And that's where the affordability issue came into play. And through our studies, I found out there's programs for low internet through Affordable Connectivity Program. It's a FCC program. But still, once again, even though they can get the monthly cost of internet down low, people are not accessing it because they don't have the device. And so that's why I really want to talk about today is devices. I think the APC program also has a program for discount devices where they can, you can get up to $100 on a device. And, you know, my number one concern is people think that they have a cellphone, so they have internet. Well, you can't apply for a job, and that's what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about the lost opportunity in parts of our community, and I want to make sure that we don't have that. So I would like the city of Springfield to really study, and I've committed to Julia, if she would like to keep me around to work on one of the subcommittees of this. But I would like a program talking about devices. And the way I look at it, we would partner, you know, with the federal program to get that $100 discount. And we have, Comcast has a program, for $150 you can get a laptop. And so that would only be $50 cost. And, you know, some of the funding sources, you know, when I was in the General Assembly, I was there when the cannabis bill was passed, and I heard the discussions about 25% of the municipal tax is going to be used in areas disenfranchised by the war on drugs. And I understand that totally. And I, and I agree and I embrace that. I think this would be an excellent use to consider, to use some of those money. And I know there's a lot of requests for money, there always is. But I think that would be something to look at because I think it will really provide opportunities to individuals who are lacking those opportunities now. But whatever program we start with devices, we have to ensure that we have training. We have to make sure these people understand how to maximize the effort of the internet and these devices. And so with that, I truly do want to thank the mayor, even though I joked earlier about the commitment, because it was something I really, really enjoyed. The community leaders were unbelievable, their engagement and the frank discussions we had. And lastly, I want to point out three members who worked for the city. Donna was always there to help us talk about grants and make sure that we understood what was available. Tom is amazing. I don't know what all Tom does for the city of Springfield, but if he does everything as well as he participated in this committee, we're very, very fortunate to have that young man as a employee of the city. And finally, Julia, she kept us together, she kept us on task. But the one thing I want to mention, she participated, but never at one time did I feel like she was bringing the mayor's agenda, her agenda to the table. We always had frank, open discussions. And so I really have enjoyed the last few months working with this and I look forward to continuing. And I will take any questions and defer them to Tom.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or any others want to discuss? So thank you very much for your service and getting us to the next phase of the broadband initiative. So thank you very much. Alderman Redpath?
I just wanted to ask, is the school district going to be involved in this or is it just a?
Yeah, they were involved, the school district. Julia, if you want to speak to that or Tom Chi, school district's involved, but.
Sorry, Julia, I didn't mean you to get away.
I know. Yes, well, through Lawrence Education, they're, yeah. So the principal kind of oversees that and then takes any, brings us any feedback from the district or provides it that way. So just due to the transition.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Next, the chair will ask if there's a reconsideration or a motion zoning docket number 2022-034 regarding 700 East Adams Street?
Ask for a point of order.
Go ahead.
Point of order, Corporation Council, could you give us the parameters of how we could do the reconsideration, the procedures? And will it change the vote tally if we bring this off the table to, for discussion?
Just very briefly, you may recall that the council's legislative body has the authority to reconsider actions at its next subsequent meeting, provided that a person that was on the prevailing side makes the motion and seconds it. It should be a motion to suspend the rules and reconsider. That simply brings it forward for discussion. After that, the same requirements apply, requiring seven votes. That was originally with the original zoning document. So the original, or the initial procedural point is simply a motion to suspend rules and to provide for reconsideration of that zoning docket. I believe it is 2022-034, and it is on the agenda for the council's action.
And as for discussion only, we'll have to bring in a separate motion for the reconsideration. Is that correct?
Just a motion to suspend the rules and reconsider this zoning docket. And if it passes, then that opens it for discussion. The mayor will summarize the zoning document, then it's open for discussion.
But again, does it got to be a separate motion?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll make the motion for, to, for the reconsideration for discussion.
Second, the motion?
Been moved in second to reconsider the docket number and second any discussion?
Aye.
Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, not to rehash the question that was just asked, but I know we have a motion before us, but I just want to be clear with parliamentary procedure. Is it possible to bring this up for just discussion so that we can hear where things are? I mean, I know we can talk about anything in the world if we have a majority brought up under like new business or old business and so forth. But I just want to be clear, does Alderman Redpath's motion, is it a motion for discussion or is it a motion to actually reconsider what was voted on last week?
The motion, in order to have the ability to debate or take action, would be a motion to reconsider. And that would require affirmative, someone from the prevailing side, in which case that would be the no votes from the last meeting, would make the motion. Then if it passes, then that allows that docket to them before the council for discussion, meaning hearing presentations, whatever. Then, like any zoning case, there can be a motion to approve or so on, whatever the action of the council is.
By any member of the council that's here tonight, correct?
Say again, please, sir.
By any member of the council that's here tonight.
That is correct.
There is a difference. Anyway, just making sure we all understand, that's all.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say nay. Open for discussion. And the docket is, the petitioner is 700 East Adams Street, owner LLC, as contract purchaser, and Tower Capital Group LP as owner by Tower GP LLC, its general partner. Present zoning classification is S3 Central Shopping District, Section 155.032. And the request of zoning relief was a variance of Section 155.049, special provisions for residential uses in the inner city to allow up to 400 residential units instead of the 200 allowed. I'd ask David Mitchell to come forward unless any council members want to make any comments initially.
Come on.
If you'd state your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Mitchell from Good Homes Co., 600 Madison Avenue, New York, New York. Before I make the presentation, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I just want to express how grateful I am for spending the time with me, not only just in this past two weeks, but really from the beginning of this journey, and really learning about Springfield and your growth plans and, you know, what was important. And I'm very impressed, not only with tonight's presentations, but really with your passion and your citizenship in trying to get the best out of Springfield and its potential and for its citizens. You know, I travel quite a bit to a lot of communities and, you know, what I'm always impressed with is hometown pride. You know, I come from a place, obviously a large city, and I really don't know if I come in contact in New York City with hometown pride. And, you know, regardless of what happens tonight or whatever, I just want to really congratulate you and applaud you for your hometown pride. And it's, you know, in a way, you read about the, you read about other cities and hometown pride and patriotism every day, you know? And so it's kind of a privilege to actually come in contact with it. Tonight is not a, I know it's a reconsideration and I'm very thankful for that. And really, tonight is not a, I'm not going to redo the presentation that I did on July 19th, but rather I was wanting to go through some requests and some questions that came up in some of our Zoom meetings and some of our phone calls and subsequent meetings and make sure that everybody has their questions answered and so that everyone could participate in what others have raised or are not raised. And so this is not really a presentation, it's more a response to your questions and your overall concerns. So I think I remember how to do this, but one of the first things that came up, and I think it was towards the end of my presentation last time, was really, you know, how do we know that there is a market and did we really go into, into the neighborhood to really see what was available? And, you know, after the meeting last time, I was approached by certain individuals who said they really had been on waiting lists for apartments downtown. So we started to dig deeper into really what that really meant. So one of the things that we, I don't know, is that we surveyed five immediate apartment communities downtown. The Villas in downtown Springfield, Lincoln Tower Apartments, Lincoln Square Apartments, St. Nicholas Apartments, and Madison Square, Madison Park Place Apartments. And what we found out, really, that there was very few apartments available. There was 615 apartments in the immediate area of the Wyndham, of the tower. And as of last week, there were six available. They were mostly at St. Nicholas, which is an income-restricted apartment building. And today, there are only three available, so I guess they rented three of those. And most of the apartments really had long waiting lists, in some cases up to 50 people on a waiting list. And in the case of the Villas downtown, in some of the, in some cases, goes out to November 1. But anyway, it's before you, and there are very few apartments downtown. I was joking with somebody at City Hall today and they said, are you moving to Springfield? I said, I would move to Springfield, but I can't find a place to rent, you know? Now, this is not only a situation where you have people actually waiting in hotels and motels to get off, to get off a waiting list and have the ability to rent apartments. If you, if you look, there are ads for extended stay apartments that are renting up to $1,200 a month basically for a hotel room. Route 66 Hotel has it for $300 a week, and that's without a kitchen. And that's with a room that's 275 square feet, is renting for $300 a month, $300 a week or $1,200 a month. And it is a microwave and a refrigerator and 275 square feet, and they have a vibrant business. And that is mainly because there's no availability downtown. So I wanted to address that because it was something that came up in the last time that we met, that there's very few, there's very few opportunities. I mean, if one wanted to rent an apartment today, there are three apartments in St. Nicholas, and again, it's income-restricted. The second concept that came up is that, you know, really, what do these apartments look like? So these apartments, for most part, were built 20, 40 years ago. They're not, when I went to visit, they're not in bad shape, but they definitely show their age, meaning because of the age of appliances or the ages of the popcorn ceilings. And, you know, what we're delivering is a brand-new community that would have contemporary design and contemporary features into your community. There certainly is no apartment buildings or communities that really start on the 11th floor, and I'll go into more detail, and certainly would not have the views. But what I, what we found is that, what we found is besides the need for apartments is that most of these apartment buildings really don't have the amenity set, which I think younger, professional, and other people who are looking for apartments would expect. I mean, you have 250 medical residents who are living throughout Springfield, but really if you actually speak to the medical centers, you know, their desire is to have their personnel all with, available within 10 minutes. And so there's a 10-minute rule that if you are a doctor or if you're a medical professional, you have to be with. you have to be, you have to be within 10 minutes' travel distance of the medical center. And so if you're living on the west side or the east side of town or around, you know, I don't know how you do that. And I do know how you do that if you're living two blocks away. And so whether you're a resident, whether you're a doctor or an essential service provider, a traveling nurse, you know, I, your opportunities to live downtown are few, as we just got over, but you're certainly not within a 10-minute radius. And so I think, you know, that's an important piece of it. I think the other important piece of it is that, you know, when I speak to local businesses, I mean, I had the opportunity today to speak to Mark Fornish at Cafe Moxo. I had a very good coffee there, by the way. And, you know, and he, he, among other local business owners, are thirsting for the people who live downtown. An opportunity last night, you know, I went to go looking for a place to eat. And, you know, there's not a lot of, there wasn't a lot of activity. When I asked him about that, he says, you know, I said, what are you operating hours? He said, well, we're closed on Sundays. I said, why are you closed on Sundays? He said, well, really, you know, people come into Springfield, but they leave early Sunday morning. And so, you know, I said, but if you had people living in downtown Springfield, he said, I would love to be open Sunday. You know, he's been in the food business and the hospitality business for 15 years. Sunday is an important day and it's just not happening there at Cafe Moxo. It's not happening in a few places in downtown. Before I go to the other piece of the presentation, you know, one of the things that was brought up last time, and I, and I, and I, and we got into somewhat of a polarized discussion about spend, about, you know, how important the visitor convention business, I mean, Scott Dahl brought that up, and I think that, I think that's an important piece. You know, residents downtown and visitors convention business is not mutually exclusive, you know, it's a mutual embrace. And, you know, I think that, you know, one of the figures that came up over the, over the last week or so is really what does the person who is visiting Springfield spend on a daily basis? The person that visits Springfield on a daily basis spends between $115 and $120 a day, that's published. And that number includes where, their accommodation, includes their meals and so on and so forth. But as we learned from the last time we met, you know, Springfield's running, you know, let's call it a 50% occupancy. So that $115 to $120, you know, is roughly $60 on an annualized basis. Because if you, you know, if you take $115, $120 and cut it in half because the only, because occupancy is only at 50%, it's about $60 a day if you annualize it. Somebody living downtown in a rental situation, you know, somewhere between $800 and $1,200 a month, is most likely spending the similar amount, $115 to $120 a day. The big difference is that's for a whole year, it's for 365 days. So it's almost double what somebody's coming to visit because of the occupancy in Springfield at 50%. Not that these two things replace each other, they should hug each other. It's a mutual embrace. One of the requests, and I think we'll probably spend most of our time on this next slide, really is that the mayor asked, you know, us to supply floor plans for each, for each floor, which I'll show you, but in, what we're suggesting now, after coming away from many discussions, is to have a hotel that operates throughout our renovation of, and of the tower. And so it will be, it will be open full-time. It will have 100 hotel rooms comprised really of 92 standard hotel rooms, two executive suites and six ADA rooms. And, and so floors, you know, three through, I think, 10 or 11, I'll have to check, will be a hotel. Our plan is to keep the entrance to the hotel as it is, keep the Starbucks, keep the meeting space. And so there won't be any visible difference to the actual approach to the hotel or when you come in. We intend to refresh the hotel, intend to make it sparkly, be sparkling and exciting. And, but from a visitor to Springfield, to someone who's coming for a convention or for meetings, this hotel will look as a hotel, will not look like a construction site. And I began preliminary discussions, you know, very informal and suggested to the mayor that we would do the construction or the renovation of the upper part of the building from the Monroe Street side. So it won't affect the approach to the BOS Center, it won't affect really the presence of the hotel. And keeping the hotel opened during this renovation is a new point. Is, you know, it is not an inconsequential point in that doing, doing your renovation above the hotel and isolating the hotel is a cost and for safety, for health and so on and so forth. So we tend to isolate the hotel and spend the required capital and so that people can have a fantastic experience all the way through our renovation of the tower. On the right-hand side is the apartments. And so, you know, we would like to produce a number of different apartments. And so if you start on the left, it is 240 Studio Efficiency Apartments, 47 one-bedroom apartments, 10 two-bedroom apartments. And then we have a capital suite that could be a large two-bedroom or three-bedroom. We have the governor's suite, which could be again, a two or three-bedroom apartment. And then we have Unit 2106 that could be a two, a three-bedroom apartment. And so it would be, in essence, 300 residential units and 100 hotel residential, hotel units. The next slide, and the slides will go, these represent the hotel floors, and so we can go through them. But here you have floors two through seven. And, and I know it's small and, but, you know, I wanted to make the presentation concise, but it, but it shows you representationally what this can be. If you look at the lighter orange compared to the pink, those are ADA rooms. And the blue are adjoining, adjoining rooms that could be adjoined. And then the, following up there, starting on floor eight on the next slide, and the slide is, are Studio Efficiency Apartments. Floors, the next floor, floors 15 through 20 is a mix of different apartments. And you can see the difference in sizes and the, and, and the, the pink is yet undetermined. It's a capital suite, which is a two, it's a two-level suite. And so this could be, as I said before, a two or three-bedroom apartment. And then if you go to the next slide, floors 21 through 26, you'll see the upper level of the capital suite. And you will see, you know, the difference between the green and the orange is where the Studio Efficiency or one-bedroom apartments, the blues are two-bedroom apartments. There's a possible four-bedroom apartment on the 21st floor, which is a very, very large meeting room hotel suite currently. And floors 27, 28 and 29, again, using the color key, are Studio Efficiency Apartments, one-bedroom apartments and two-bedroom apartments. Of course, you know, I can email you much larger, much larger plans, but I wanted to be able to at least present it visually for you and so that we all knew what we were talking about. The next slide is, I just, and this is, you know, I just wanted to explain from our point of view and not that, you know, I want to spend a lot, I'll spend as much time as required. But, you know, when people, when people talk about the hotel business and people talk about the multifamily residential business, you know, one, one important factor, two important factors is the, you know, how they differ from a, from a business point of view is that hotels trade at a much lower value. In this case, we put a 10 cap. And one of the other reasons is that hotels generate less income in this particular market than multifamily. And so this is, just to show you the differences from a, from a, this is a business point of view. And, you know, at the bottom, there's a key of, you know, just using, you know, what the impact is to the overall development, you know, as far as the number of hotel rooms to the, to the greater transaction. So if I just, if I just could go back, because I'm sure that, I wanted to go back to the, to the scale that has the, that one, yes, thank you. So at the very, at the very high level, what is not on here is the observation deck and the food court. That's still part of our proposal. We don't have a plan for that yet. We're speaking to different operators and designers, as I mentioned last time. Merlin, which is a very large operator of tourist attractions. We intend incorporating the Springfield Historical Society into the exhibit halls and as I presented to you last time. The other piece that is not on here is the existing meeting and convention space, which is also part of our, which is also part of the plan, but, you know, we wanted to drill down specifically to how many hotel rooms and apartments. And under this plan, it'll be the same amenities that we spoke about before. The world-class gym, pool, tenant lounges, co-working spaces, game rooms and function rooms for the tenants that they can lease out. You know, one of the things that we didn't speak about is the laundry. There's a, there's a laundry facility on every other floor for the hotel tenants. The parking, we did speak about extensively, the assigned parking, covered parking. And in the, I don't think we spoke about it, but I know there was a picture in the last presentation of tenant storage. You know, one of the things that I think is very distinctive and it's probably the most popular requested item is tenant storage. And that we're going to put on the lower level of the hotel, so that's also not reflected. I know there's a picture in the, in the last presentation. So, you know, a tenant storage for each unit. And of course, you know, the, we're talking about, you know, different entrances for the observation attraction, the, the hotel having a, for a separate entrance for its, for its reception and meeting space. And of course, for the tenant lobby. So each one will have its own specific identity. I'm here really, you know, to, I mean, to prepare this presentation really was, was really in response to your interest and your questions. And so I'm here really to, wanted to ask for your reconsideration of your vote, but also to really answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments? Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your time and presentation this evening. You know, I said it a couple of weeks ago that, you know, the building, and I still call it the Hilton, the Wyndham, excuse me, some people call it the Forum 30. It's been around a while. It's obviously been a economic engine of this community for decades. It's, it's one of the most identifiable structures, needless to say. And we, I think, all want to see it thrive, all want to see it continue as an economic engine. And we, of course, and I'm glad you shared your comments with Mr. Fornash, I think it's safe to say that everybody at the horseshoe wants to see more people downtown. Right? That's a combination of employees, residents, and economic development needs to continue. My questions are kind of all over the board, but someone asked me, a friend of mine asked me, and I didn't, I didn't ask this question last time, so I'm going to start there. Tell me a little bit about the cities our size that you've done projects in similar to this. You mentioned in the, in the proposal last time, you showed some examples in, like the New York and if I, from what I recall, and it's larger cities in Texas, but I don't recall anybody asking if you've done a project in a city similar to the size of Springfield.
Well, I'm going to answer, I'm going to answer your question in two pieces. First, I'm going to show you different hotel to residential conversions and the size of the units and how they were converted. So I have a presentation on that. And the sec-
I don't mean to interrupt you. I don't, I don't really want another presentation. And it is, if you haven't, it's not a criticism. I just didn't ask last time. Have you done a project, kind of, have you done a project even similar to this in a city of 117,000 people, 115,000 people?
Well, the city of Las Vegas is, the city of Las Vegas is 136,000 people. The Las Vegas area is 2 million people. We did 1,100 units in conversion in exactly the same manner. You know, I showed you a lot-
You've done larger projects. That's not, again, not a criticism, that's just, you answered the question, so. You've done larger cities, not cities the size of Springfield.
No, I'm saying the city of Las Vegas is 136,000 people.
Okay. I don't think anybody considers Springfield, Las Vegas the same size.
But there's a difference. We did in downtown Las Vegas, similar sort of conversions. We are now developing in cities that are very similar to Springfield, such as Erie, Erie, Pennsylvania, 86,000 residents. City of Fayetteville is 100 and, well, with permanent residents in Fayetteville is 110,000, I mean, without, without Fort Bragg, 110,000. If you, if you look at, if you look, if you look at Birmingham or if you look at Chattanooga, you know, they're upwards of 200,000 citizens. If you, I mean, I mean, depending upon how you look at Glenview, which is a suburb of Chicago. Glenview is, you know, 89,000 people.
And I appreciate a lot. You helped me understand the types you're either working on or have done. And again, I appreciate, I said it last time, I appreciate your interest in Springfield. We need more interest in Springfield, always encourage that. Look, I just want to, just, it helps me process the information to kind of look at where we started from. When the, when the zoning petition was filed, from what I understand, the original request was to convert all of the, all of the hotel rooms into apartments. And then through conversations you had with city officials and concerned entities throughout the community, the, you corrected me on the phone, it's not, it wasn't a proposal, but the scenario that was discussed at the last City Council meeting, zoning meeting, was 80 hotel rooms. And then now what's, really what's changed from the last time this was voted upon was it goes, changes from 80 to 100 hotel rooms. That's correct. I mean, that's essentially the change.
What I would tell you, the other change is that the hotel will be, remain open during construction, which is not part of a initial zoning variance, but, you know, it is a, something that has been requested and something that was expressed as needed. So I would, I would tell you that at least from the tempo of the discussion, that is a change from the last time we met.
One of the things that was passed out, and I assume it was by Corporation Council to us, was a document that has four numbers on it and different scenarios and talks about, it's really a contingency sheet that if someone were to bring this forward. But one of the things I didn't see on this sheet, and maybe I'm missing it, and we discussed this last time, was the concept of having a, what we'll call a flag operator. Meaning like a Marriott or a Hilton or Wyndham, something of that nature. Is that something that was a part of the scenario last time and it, should it be a part of the scenario this time?
This will remain a flag hotel.
But it, so it should be a part of it, of the scenario or any contingencies put forward by whomever.
It can be. It'll have a flag on top.
Okay, I think I understand. Thank you.
What, with this one, this one point I wanted to make is that- What, with this one, this one point I, I wanted to make is that, that I wanted to express is that, you know, we intend on working with the city to make this, you know, one of the, part of the, the leading, one of the leading environmental unconscious developments, probably in the state. You know, we're entering into a PACE program to make this energy, super energy efficient, that means replacing the windows, replacing the HVA systems, really, you know, to be preeminent as far as, and conscious of, of the environment and, 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 and energy consumption. So I just wanted to just make that point, because I didn't make it the last time that we met.
In, in closing, Mayor, I, I just, I'm, I'm very concerned about the impact of any major reduction in, in the downtown hotel market and the impact on conventions and long-term hotel rooms. I just feel that if we were to lose a great number of hotel rooms, that we are never going to get them back downtown. That's my concern. So thank you.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. So, and David, again, thank you. Echo my, my colleagues' comments on, on appreciation for your interest. I, I do wish we could interest you in, in remodeling one of our other downtown buildings.
As I say, the end of Casablanca is the start of a beautiful relationship.
We could, we could just kind of move it to a different kind of a friend zone, that'd be great. I, I have two questions, and I'm not entirely certain these are even for you. They may be for a mayor or Corporation Council. And again, thank you, Alderman Donlin. I did not notice this sheet of paper underneath the other pile of papers that was on our desk today. So this, this number four, all project work shall be done, shall be in compliance with the TIF project development agreement made with the city. Do we have this agreement? Has this been discussed? I mean, what is this TIF development agreement?
Point of order, if I may. Is that the same, what, I'm glad you're bringing up that four-part motion to grant the petition. Is that the same motion that was made two weeks ago by Ward 5 and Lakeisha Purchase? So it's, it's what we considered two weeks ago?
And I still don't know what this TIF agreement is.
Just to answer the question, I think the primary difference, I think Alderman Donlin, I think, mentioned which was-
This is different than what we said last week, yeah.
Yes. Was the change from 80 to 100 rooms to remain as hotel. And the concept was regarding number four, there, that there is going to be a request, I think that's, I think that was discussed at some length at different times, that there would be a request for TIF and/or CPACE or some combination. And so that development agreement would have to come back to the council of, to be finalized. But it was felt that since that was part of the presentation or part of the discussion for land use purposes, it would be clear that any development agreement that was entered into, that would be part of the requirements because of the variance that was being requested. And for example, if you look at three, one of the issues was they, because again, the presentation that's been made, the council is attempting to consider whether or not to accept the proposal as being presented. And so certain timeframes, which we've done before with other projects, for example, with TIF, putting certain timeframes of performance, otherwise the zoning would revert back. So these elements are trying to, and again, ordinarily, you would have a circumstance where you might have the TIF development agreement contemporaneous. This is a case because of timing, where the land use issue has to be resolved in order to take the next step to be able to see if financing is available. But the TIF development agreement, which would be coming on, or CPACE agreement, would still have to come back to the council. So we wanted to make clear that that is considered part of the zoning use request, the variance request, since that's the presentation that the developer is making.
Okay, thank you. And then, so my second question, and Mr. Zirkle, I know you, I've emailed you twice about this and didn't get a response, so I'm going to assume that since the mayor has disclosed executive session conversations, we can talk about that in this open session?
Yeah, since it was disclosed at a local radio station by an email from an Alderman and a text by another council member, that did open up the opportunity where that confidentiality was breached. And so I had made it clear anytime I can that we discuss this executive session on November 2021 of the amount owed on the utility bill and what the, how we were going to take care of that.
So, and, and again, this is not your bill, and you were not the, the topic of that conversation. But in that executive session conversation, we were told that the city is owed over $1 million by the current owners for, on their CWLP bills. So what is the resolution to, to that bill, to our city's utility in regards to this agreement? How do, are we going to be, will CWLP be paid as part of this sale?
Yes, was, was discussed as part of the refinance or sell of the property, then the settlement would be made at that point in time. And we put lien on the property to cover the electricity and water usage, so it'd cover that, those bills associated with that.
Is that your understanding of this, too?
Yep.
Only from what I've heard, and I'm not part of the ownership or currently, and I didn't make it-
No, I know you're not. And, but I am concerned that we have, we have something on, in front of us right now that, that obligates, you know, and again, this is the zoning and, and you're the purchaser. And I know the owner's in the audience, so if you'd like to get up, he can comment on that, but-
We would pay all liens on the property and deduct it from the purchase price.
Okay, thank you. I, I will just say, and unfortunately, I was not able to be here last week to have any conversations about this, but I, I do have additional concerns about losing all this hotel space downtown. I, I've been contacted by a number of people who are, you know, have, have deep issues with, with the loss of, of the hotel space that we've got. And, and I, it will be the Hilton to me for, that's, that's how I speak of it. But I do appreciate very much the consideration and, and the level of thought and your level willingness to work with the city on, on these issues. That's my question. Thank you.
Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I apologize for pushing the button a second time, but I just wanted to make sure, because I know I haven't spoken with hardly any of you about this. When we had our conversation last week on the telephone about this project, one of the things that was brought up was the fact that there will be a request for a targeted TIF. And I asked, what is that? And essentially, and you, anybody can correct me if I understand this, not correct. But what happens is that they, we would need to remove this property from the existing downtown TIF district. And that, of course, would require council action. And then the property would, in order to create a new targeted TIF, meaning just this project specific, the property would have to qualify. And it either qualifies as a blighted property or as a, what is termed conservation, which is not what it sounds like. It's a technical term in the TIF statute that basically means it's almost blighted. And we don't know if that property would qualify. And then what would happen is there would be a development agreement, as Mr. Zirkle alluded to. So that process, the TIF setup process, even if we start at this very minimum, at a minimum is 90, no, probably about 180 days, half a year. And then, but that leads to my question. First of all, I want to make sure everybody understood, because not everybody may have asked that question. But I guess, I don't, and I want to get very clear here, I'm not here to, I don't bring this up to negotiate a development agreement right here. But I assume that, and maybe it's incorrect, that there would be a request for 100% of the increment for qualified expenditures generated from this property up to a certain dollar amount. Is that right?
Well, we've not gone into the detail of, of a TIF agreement.
Right.
It is tell you in other TIF agreements that I've been party to, I mean, TIF stands for tax increment financing, so it's the taxes that one would pay over the base, would in essence be reinvested, so to speak, back into the property as a rebate or, it's not really an abatement, but, 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 but as a rebate back into it-
Right.
In order to, in order, and the reason why municipality does that is really to take a long-term view of increasing its tax base and to attract investment. I mean, I'm not telling, I'm, I'm sure I'm telling you something you already know, but, 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 but that's my understanding of this TIF, it would, would be that.
I, I appreciate that, and, and I think coming from you, that reiterates the fact that, you know, it is a reinvestment in that specific project. And I, again, I just wanted to make sure that we all understand, including the public, that the full, the full scenario that has been outlined. And that's all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you.
But with just one point on that is that, you know, it's, it's not asking this, the city for its COVID American reconstruction money. It's not asking the city to make a grant or a loan. It's really, it's asking, the TIF, you know, basically just says, you know, the taxes that you would, you would have paid on the incremental assessment because of your investment, it would come back into it. So it's, it's almost like, you know, I'm betting on me, or betting on the success, the success of it, and not really asking for anything else, because if there's no investment, then there's no, no increased assessment.
No, no, I, I understand the risk is on the developer. Those risks would be on the developer. You don't get anything back unless there's an increment generated and you, you perform, and I, I understand that wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Alderman Conley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alderwoman Conley, for bringing up that four-point zoning docket 022-034 that was on our desk, because I wasn't sure whether that was the identical set of items we had last week or different from two weeks ago. And I'm, I'm still not sure exactly what the differences are, if, if this is a different sheet that we're receiving today. But regardless, what really is important in my mind about this project is that unless we reach a compromise regarding the zoning, we face the risk of losing all the hotel rooms. We face the risk of losing all the hotel rooms. I think what's also significant here is that the amount of investment here through the change of ownership is very important for our downtown and for our tax increment financing district, because it'll raise the amount of funds that can be available for tax increment financing on the premise that the value goes up after $25 million or whatever it is of new construction or upgrading. That increases the value of the property, which increases the amount of real estate tax revenue that's available for everybody. All the tax and jurisdictions will get the benefit of that increased amount of, of tax revenue. I also thought it was important today that Good Homes wrote a letter that you're in favor of labor project agreements. And I believe that was a discussion with the plumbers and pipe fitters, I believe, which will be doing a substantial amount of work. So I think that's another, that you want to cooperate with our hometown labor groups. So those are some of the points that I thought had to be brought out tonight. Thanks for discussing the concerns that some of the Aldermen and Alderwomen had two weeks ago. Mr. Mitchell, I think you did a commendable job in, in that respect.
Thank you.
Alderman Williams?
Yeah. So, so thank you for coming back. I appreciate you. Actually, I, I would like Director Dial to come up, if he would please. Because what I'm weighing is what the Alderman just spoke of, zero possible, zero hotels versus what we're being proposed to and the impacts. To me, no matter what goes there, it's going to need incentives, it's going to need something from the city, whether it's TIF, ARPA, something, you know, to get that thing going again. But what I want to ask you, Director, is if, if, if this doesn't go, and, and we, we don't have hotel rooms in that building, how's that impact our visitor and convention bureau commitments, conventions, things like that?
Well, we won't know until we talk to the convention planners exactly what they're thinking. Obviously, we would offer them alternatives around the city. There would probably have to be some consideration for shuttle service, there are subsidies to consider as well. But, yeah, I mean, if you have zero hotel rooms across the street, so we only have 275 available rooms or so at, at the Doubletree at max, then, yeah, we would have to shift and move. There's a possibility that of those 26 conventions that I mentioned between 2023 and 2025, representing almost 57,000 room nights, or $15 million in economic impact, that, yeah, that they would, at multiple years, look to move, or we would not be able to accommodate them at that point. So, yeah, if we, if we have zero, if we, just real quick, if we run down and we have the 100 rooms available of those 26, we would have 21 conventions that would be impacted with the 100 rooms. So it comes down just a, a little bit at 125 rooms across the street or at, at the Wyndham, open continuously. That's 17 conventions that would, of those 26 that would be impacted, again, having those available rooms next door.
Okay, but, but we're in a situation where these conventions are scheduled, so there is still some wiggle room, like conventions could cancel and say, no, we don't want to do the shuttle thing, you don't have the rooms, so we're going somewhere else? Or are they signed up that they, they're forced to work with us to accommodate them?
No, I mean, the, each individual contract is different, but no, I mean, we have obligations to meet them with rooms downtown. So they would not have to work with us at that point. We would breach our side of the agreement, so they could certainly either move cities or, you know, not have their convention or whatever it may be.
The key word was downtown, rooms downtown.
Yeah, we're talking about just room, shared conventions downtown between the Doubletree and the Wyndham. That's all we're focusing on here. And by the way, the 26 conventions we're referring to, if you'll remember, are using 300 peak room nights, because that's the, the 225 at the Doubletree, and then the, we were talking about 80 or so at the, at the Wyndham, was the original proposal. So we focused on those 300 peak room nights at that point.
Thank you.
Yeah, on that, I know I asked you to look at the State House Inn, they have 75 rooms.
Right.
And didn't that bring, with the 100 rooms plus the 75, didn't that bring it down to nine impacted conventions?
They did. So I did reach out to the State House Inn and had them take a look at 23 through 25, and if they would have, and we didn't give them dates, but just had them in general look, if they had 75 rooms available, what that would look. And you're exactly right, Mayor, it brings that. If you have 100 rooms, that brings, and the 75 at the State House. And remember, the planners have to agree to it. So they have to agree to move four blocks. And again, that's, we don't know that. That's an unknown. I did reach out to a convention that has been here for many, many years, and then they said they wouldn't be willing to do it at this point. So, I mean, that's just one convention. Would other convention planners decide to do that? Possibly. We'd probably have to include some kind of a shuttle service for them in case of inclement weather or what have you. But if they did move it, you're indeed right. It would move it down to nine conventions would be impacted. If we had 125 rooms, it'd be six conventions would be impacted. If we have, again, 125 at the Wyndham and the 70 combined with the 75 at the State House, and the convention planners agreed upon that.
So if we're all hypothecating, right?
Yes.
You know, it's all variables, who knows what the future holds. What would you rather have, the 100 rooms or the zero rooms?
Well-
Really, quite honestly, that's what we're, I mean, we have to, here, here's the bottom line, how I look at it. You have two owners, we know what we have right now, you know, so that's what we're dealing with. And then you have one that's willing to invest in the hotel and the, you know, the apartment side of things. And the struggle that we all have is what's that proper balance? You know, we all want to save the conventions, and we're concerned about, you know, what's the right amount of apartments? So every time that number moves, the other one, you know, moves, and that's what the struggle is. But really, what we have in front of us is what's at hold for our future and what's the best option? Because, you know, we're talking $30 million, that's not, that's not, that's a lot of money, resources, especially in this environment that we're in right now. And so whatever we do is going to impact the conventions without a doubt. And so what we're trying to figure out is what's the best-case scenario for the council to take action on to, you know, provide the best potential path forward with the conventions and with, you know, the apartment project idea? Because right now, the current owner can do that right now. But as the current owner told all of us, he's not going to put it back to the bank, he's going to retain it for apartments, because he's, you know, lost- he's, you know, lost a lot of resources, money, related to the hotel side of things. And so that's basically what we're looking at, and trying to figure out that best option. So I don't know if you want to respond. I, I think I know the answer, but, you know, we can't have this dire cast, you know, storm out there, you know, saying the hundred rooms, you know, reduces this. Well, I know what zero does. It's devastating. Devastating. So if we want to take that risk and hope the guy, the current owner keeps it open, or we have someone that's going to ride in, like the Hotel Lodging Association, or somebody else, that's going to operate the two-hundred rooms, you know, hopefully that, you know, that's a wish, or hope and a dream, or whatever you want to call it. But that's what we're trying to figure out, is what's the best alternative to move forward from this position. And of course, Alderman Donald pointed out, with the TIF agreement, that does give us leverage to make sure that's what's said tonight is actually delivered through on the project. Because that's, that's the whole key. And so, but what we know right now, anybody can go over there right now, it's not a pretty picture.
And then I just have one final question on the conventions. So, so when the conventions were set up for these future years, they, they were sold on, on being downtown, like, because I know, like, the Crown could handle some of those conventions and do it all right there in that one building. But, but the key is, the, the people, the planners are thinking, I'm downtown, not at the, out there at the Crown.
It's location-driven. So they all had an opportunity to book at the Crown, if the Crown was available. So yes, the Crown was considered in, in every instance, and they chose downtown because the proximity, the convenience between the two properties connected to the BOS Center as well. So I think that's the case. And, you know, real quick, back on just the zero hotel rooms. I mean, if we, if we had a position that, we had a hotel close, and that was not our fault, then a force majeure would be in place, and that would then move through the contract, and we would be able to then try to provide accommodations through, around the city. So in that sense, it really technically would not be the city's fault. So that's just a little bit different, that there was zero rooms, and that's what we would try to do. We would look around the city and provide you that shuttle service or for the, but we'd be protected in the contracts through the force majeure.
But the unfortunate thing on that is downtown's impacted regardless.
It is, absolutely.
I know the retailers are very concerned, and I understand that, because they say tourists spend more money, so you'd want to save as many hotels, spaces downtown as possible.
Absolutely.
Alderman McMinimo.
Yeah, I, I just want to back up what your last comment, Mr. Mayor, is that if this zoning does not go through tonight, and the current owner goes through with his plan to have zero hotel rooms and subsidized housing, I think it's a devastating blow to our downtown, to our reputation, to our conventions, to everything. I think it's a, it's a death kiss to have a, a Form 30 that's now no longer a hotel, and it's no reinvestment in the deferred maintenance. And who knows when we'll get our million dollars of unpaid utility bills, because the whole idea behind this transfer of ownership is we've got to lean against the, the property. And the new owner doesn't take title with a million-dollar lien. He pays down that million dollars, and all of a sudden, our utility has a million dollars more than what they have tonight. So that's one of the advantages to this, this sale going through. And that's why in executive session, no one objected, no one objected to the fact that we had a million dollars of debt, because we didn't want to harm our downtown by talking about it. We didn't want to jeopardize the negotiations that were going on between the current owner and the prospective owner. And we knew we were going to follow lien against, to protect our interest. So I think this will be devastating if we don't pass this tonight, because we're going to be facing a horrendous world of unknowns.
Any other questions for Scott? Comments? I know I did ask Ryan McCready and Kayla Graven to come, because they, I know Ryan's done some research at the quest of some individuals at the city, so if you'd like to come up and speak to the group, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening. Ryan McCready. I'm with the Springfield Saguamor Growth Alliance in downtown Springfield. You have a very difficult decision for you tonight. I mean, I think land use decisions are probably some of the toughest things that local governmental officials have to deal with. I, I did, as, as part of my, in my meetings with Mr. Mitchell and his team, we've talked, talked several times. One of the things I did is I took a look at his property portfolio, Alderman Donald, and to your question about projects in similar-sized communities. And although the majority of his projects were in bigger communities, he has done some in comparable communities. One of them that I was able to look into that wasn't mentioned as much in the portfolio was in Warwick, Rhode Island, population of about eighty-two-thousand. I recognize it's an east coast city, and the metro areas are big, but similar-sized community. He's involved in the conversion of a hundred-and-eighty-room Sheraton Hotel to apartments. Very similar scenario, right? The hotel was not thriving, had some deferred maintenance. He's been working with the city and the economic development folks there. I was able to have a, a nice conversation with the staff there. That's one thing economic development people do, is, is work, we can see ourselves as colleagues. We compete, but we always see ourselves as colleagues, and, and we share information. And they've had a very good experience with Mr. Mitchell and his, his team, his development team, as far as, they're up to the point now where I think the building permit may be issued. If it's not issued today, it, it would be probably tomorrow. So he said, they've said that his architectural team, his design team, has been very good to work with from a building code perspective, planning perspective, and he's moving forward with that project as we speak. So I do, you know, I do feel that Mr. Mitchell's a qualified developer, that he's done projects like this, has experience in doing these things. So if, you know, in your decision, if, if you're wondering about whether Mr. Mitchell and his development team are the, the group of individuals that might be able to complete a project like this, I have reason to believe that he has that experience, and has done projects like this in other places. The tough decision you have to make is the decision about convention versus residential activities in downtown Springfield. And that's, that's not one I can make for you. That's unfortunately one you have to make. I will tell you that I agree that there is a demand for residential units downtown. With the Growth Alliance, we, the big part of what we do, right, is we meet with businesses that are here every single day. There is a da, a demand for downtown residential units, without a doubt. And I, I agree, completely agree with him on that. He's done the market research to take a look at that. And so I do believe that demand's there. I believe that this is a well-qualified development team. And so hopefully that gives you some background on some of the work that the Growth Alliance has done. Happy to try to answer questions if you have any, but I know it's already been a long meeting, so.
Any questions? Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Kayla, if you'd like to come forward, and we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening. DSI Executive Board did take a vote to the, prior to the July meeting, and we did vote to be in favor of the conditional zoning at that time. I realize conditional zoning has changed to, I think, a hundred hotel rooms, which prior conversations, it did seem that a hundred and hundred-and-fifty hotel rooms were needed to justify the changes for the conventions down here. But we do also echo those concerns of the conventions at that time, but with that change, we have not taken a new vote. So we are in favor. Is there any questions or comments that you need from me?
Thank you. Any other discussion? Sure, Michael.
Michael Higgins, eighteen oh eight Dial Court, and owner of Mauler's Restaurant Downtown. And when I first met these gentlemen at the restaurant, I was kind of skeptical about this project. I thought it didn't go far enough in terms of having apartments, or condominiums, or whatever, that appealed to, across the board to a lot of people. They had an opportunity to do what they're doing now, putting in three bedrooms, two bedrooms. Back then, when we talked, it was mostly studios. And so I'm glad to see that they've made that choice in expanding the, the different levels of apartments. The other thing is, how many of you have been to conventions here in other towns? Did you get to stay across the street from your convention center? Did you take a cab? Did you take mass transit? Did you take the subway? Yes. We're fortunate enough to have a convention center that has two hotels right within, across the street from it. But how many times have you gone to conventions where you got to do that? Now, Scott, who I respect very much, has sold some of these conventions based on that. But also, if you only base your conventions on what's across the street from your convention center, you're missing out on conventions that could supply Holiday in the East, other hotels downtown, and the two hotels next to each other. So I think having that thought of just conventions that are across, hotels that are just across the street from the convention center is nice, but where do you have that in other cities? Have you been to a convention in Chicago? How far did you have to go to the convention center? If you've been at a convention in St. Louis, even smaller town, how far did you have to go to the convention center? It wasn't across the street. So traveling to your convention from your hotel room is not a new thing, and it's not an unusual thing. I think then, when you talk about the shop owners wanting convention people, yes, we do. As a restaurant, I want the convention people, because it fulfills my restaurant during conventions. But at the same time, I would like to see downtown gentrified, meaning as more people move into downtown, then more shops and different shops have an opportunity to spring up. And as more shops and different shops have an opportunity to spring up, maybe people will cross Veterans Parkway to come downtown. I mean, we are the art and entertainment center of this city. By gentrifying and increasing our population, we make opportunities for more people to be down here, for more tourists to be down here, for different reasons, and for more reasons for people in the city to come down here. And the biggest thing, the more living people in the population density of downtown, you hide the homeless, because now they aren't the majority of people. They're the minority of people. And you go to cities where you see homeless people, and you see lots of other people around them, they become hidden. They are not the standout. Not that we don't want to deal with homeless. I am not saying that at all, because we are way behind in dealing with homeless. But they're not the number-one person on the street as we like to think of in Springfield. And that's the way we think of them. Downtown, homeless and needles. That's the way Springfield thinks of downtown. Maybe we should increase the population of residents, and shops, and stores, and maybe, you know, food stores and things like that. And then it doesn't become homeless and needles. It becomes a big, bigger population density, where that all gets homogenized and kind of hidden, or looked, you know, where it's not in your face. It's called gentrification. When is that going to happen in Springfield? I have no idea, because, like I said, someone asked me, what's my biggest competition? I say Veterans Parkway, because people who live out there have no reason to come downtown. Your stores, your restaurants, and everything is there. Why do you need to come downtown? So, like you've seen in other cities, like where they've taken areas that were, let's say, rundown and whatever, and as they built up, then they become pride of the community. Let's say, like, let's say Soho in New York, or whatever, that used to be rundown and nothing, and now is a big tourist. It's called gentrification. And when is that going to happen to our downtown in our inner city? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Is there a motion to consider the petition of three-hundred residents and one-hundred hotel rooms?
I make a motion.
Consider. Three-hundred and one-hundred.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
He can't do that.
He can't make the motion.
You got to get a no vote.
Corporation Council?
No, the motion to reconsider requires the motion to be made by a person on the prevailing side, i.e. no votes. When the matter's before the entire body, then it's just open to a motion by anybody, but it still requires seven votes.
Okay.
It's still, in other words, it, it doesn't modify the original position, which was, it was a variance that was turned down. Therefore, the statute requires an extraordinary majority.
Is there a motion for reconsideration as Corporation Council?
Yeah, I would, I, I think the, the, at the last, to try to be helpful here, the last time, there was a motion to grant the petition contingent on those elements. The only change from the preceding motion that was addressed by the city council is the change increasing the number of hotel rooms to one-hundred versus three-hundred. The other three-hundred apartment units, the other items about market rate, consistent with the, you know, project scope of the project, construction plans and building permits have to be applied for and so on within a hundred-and-eighty days, and that it shall comply with any TIF development agreement. Those are, items are all the same as had, as had been presented before.
So I understand that you're saying that Alderman Williams' motion is in order, because...
Correct. The, the motion to reconsider has to be made by a person who was on the prevailing side. In that instance, it was a no vote. When the motion to reconsider is granted, that simply brings the matter forward, and anyone then, it's as if it starts de novo. So then anyone may make a motion, but it does not change that there's still two-thirds required. But in terms of order, the only way it can be reconsidered if someone on the prevailing side, the negative, asks it to be reconsidered. That was done initially, as I understand it, by voice vote unanimous. It was brought forward. It's before the body, so anyone may make a motion, but it still requires the extraordinary majority.
I'll second the motion by Alderman Williams.
And would that be with the variance with these items?
Do we have to read them?
Yes, yes.
So do I need to read that?
Yes, go ahead. Alderwoman Purchase.
The motion to grant the petition contingent on the following. Number one, the variance is limited to allow up to three-hundred apartment residential units, with a hundred of the remaining hotel residential rooms to remain and to be used as hotel rooms, only and whenever possible vacant apartments may be used for hotel convention space as needed. Number two, the apartments are to be market rate rent, and the project shall be consistent with the project scope submitted at the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council by the petitioner. Number three, project financing shall be committed and available. Construction plans shall be completed, and building permits shall be applied for all within a hundred-and-eighty days of the zoning approval. Number four, all project work shall be in compliance with the TIF project development agreement made by the city, including the scope of work, budget, and construction schedule.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
What do you want to vote? Go on.
Tell them your vote.
No.
Did you hear, old mayor?
So the motion fails by voting yes, and four voting no. Correct, counsel?
Correct. It would require seven affirmative votes. It would require seven affirmative votes in order to pass.
Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the July 19th, 2022 city council meeting and approve the minutes.
A move.
Second.
Been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this city council meeting.
A move.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Gregory.
Um, is the, is the new packet that you gave us, um, 2022, 356 through 360 also going on first reading as well? Am I, the packet that was on our desk, Mr. Zarco?
Which ones were those again?
It would be, um, the new packet that we got, uh, 356 through 360. Are those all going on first reading, I assume, as well?
Yeah, they'll be at the end.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this city council meeting.
A move.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMenamin.
First, have you asked for any action on ordinances that are being held in committee? Have you asked for that yet?
No, not yet.
Okay, okay. That'll come later. Then, um, I've just got a comment regarding one of the ordinances on consent, and I'm, I'm in favor of the ordinance. I'm a, I'm a yes vote. It's the ordinance that has to do with the downtown traffic modernization and one-way streets conversion project. Um, I received a phone call from, uh, Mr. Doug Wagner. I think he also, uh, talked with Lakeisha, with Alderman Lakeisha Purchase, and also with, uh, Alderman, uh, John Filgenzi. This particular individual goes to the YMCA. Uh, this has to do with the conversion of one-way to two-way on Fourth Street and the, um, at the very northern extension of Fourth Street between, um, between Carpenter and Dodge. You've got two, um, high parking density type oper, um, activities. You've got the YMCA, and you've got the Art Association across the street. And, um, thank you for taking notes, um, Director Bottom. And he, he's, he goes to the YMCA every six days a week, and he's also at the Art Association often. And he's concerned about a, um, a new traffic hazard if those two blocks go turn two-way. Um, he thinks leaving them one-way, those two blocks north of Carpenter all the way to Dodge is, is a more safer approach with all the children, seniors, and others in that area. And currently, there's parking on each side of the road, and he thinks that if people are coming out of the parking lots and going left, going right, et cetera, there'll be a greater hazard. He thinks that now it's, it's one-way, and to keep those two blocks one-way, there'll be less crisscrossing of vehicles as they exit parking lots and that kind of thing. So he just would like, um, as you go down this $4 million project, this is just a small, small slice of the total project, just ask our traffic engineer to rethink those two blocks.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at it, and we are planning on converting them, but we definitely want to make sure it's safe for all modes of traffic and pedestrians. So we'll take a look at the site distances, and if we need to pull anything back to open up site distance, uh, then, then we will take care of that as part of the construction. And please feel free to reach out to the office, and we can, I can talk to the gentleman.
I gave Mr. Wagner, um, TJ Hevitside's, uh, phone, phone number and, and how to reach him. And, um, Wagner contacted me. We worked at the Camp Lincoln National Guard for many years, and, uh, he, uh, has recently moved into the city. He felt comfortable trying to just get this issue before you. Thank you, Director.
Thanks. We'll, we'll make sure it's safer pedestrians.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda?
Did you look at your screen?
Pardon me?
Your screen.
Lakeisha wants to talk.
Oh, sorry. Alderman Purchase.
Thank you. Um, Director Bottom? Um, the Edwards Place had, had also, um, voiced concern about also having the two ways. And I just asked right before the project starts, I told them this happened before I got here, as well as I'm a present vote due to me working at the Illinois Department of Transportation. Can we have a, some type of meeting to show them how this will look and, um, if they have any questions that you're able to be there to a, answer those concerns? And I'm just asking before the project starts because I told them that this has already been done and it's moving forward. So I'm not for sure that we can change it, and I don't want to confuse anybody neither.
Sure. No, uh, we only want to construct the, uh, signals one time, um, put them in one time. But, uh, I'm more than willing to meet. We can share the plan and profiles, and come into our office. We can show them the plans, as well as, uh, the gentleman you mentioned too, Alderman McMenamin, so.
Well, can I ask you to come into the community just because we can get the people who attend the Y and the Edwards Place and the neighbors that's right there? I think it would make them feel more better, and people are visual, like they want to see.
Yep, we can meet them and show the plans.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the, uh, motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final pass.
A move.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Mr. Clerk? Can you make sure you do 2022, 330 as present for me?
And the consent agenda passes, eight voting yes, none voting no.
Noted.
Agenda number 2022-256, 2022-285, and 2022-337 remain table during committee. Is there any action on any of those?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Alderman McMenamin.
Last week, uh, Alderman Hanaire inquired regarding the Enos Park ordinance and inquired what action might be taken on that. And in the meanwhile, we received correspondence from Mr. Ted Curtis of Memorial and from Mr. Ryan McCready, who is here today regarding, uh, their support of this ordinance. And so, uh, there, uh, Mr. McCready is here today. He spoke earlier, and there's others here also that, uh, apparently wish to speak on this issue. So I'd like to make a motion to bring 2022, 285 out of, uh, committee and put it on the debate agenda.
It's been moved to bring 2022, and what was that number? I'm sorry.
285.
285 out of committee. Is there a second?
Can I?
Alderman Purchase, second the motion, counselor.
And I have a question.
This is for discussion.
Um, corporation counsel, can you, I know I asked you, I can't remember if it was last week or the week before, um, what is the rule for me participating and not in just moving forward when we have people who have sat on previous boards, people who have family that has organizations that we're voting on? What is the rule of thumb for when those situations, you know, come forward?
Well, I think, I believe we've discussed this, uh, before, but the, um, without knowing all of the factual circumstances, but the general rule is very straightforward. Uh, no person, whether it's on the council or any, any board, the Board of Trustees of Lincoln Land or anything else, uh, they should not be casting a vote, making motions or otherwise, uh, on any action or contract or motion that they have a direct financial interest in. Now, beyond that, uh, there has been kind of a, uh, a more, uh, broad process of the appearance of a conflict. Now, there are instances where there can be the appearance of a conflict, but not necessarily legal conflict. So, uh, in each instance, uh, an elected official or board member, uh, if they want a formal opinion, I need to get, if, if it relates to city matters, I need to get a very specific pieces of information so I can then write a formal opinion. But the normal rule is, uh, by law, that if you have a pecuniary or financial interest in a motion, you know, contract, ordinance, resolution in any manner, you should not be participating in any manner in that, uh, in consideration of that. That means motions, voting, debating, and so on. And if there's an appearance of it, then you should use good sense and know when to kind of recuse yourself so you do not present the appearance of the conflict.
So what about in a discussion? Just for discussion?
If there is a, if there's a, if there's a conflict, uh, then you may not or should not participate where there's a conflict based on a financial interest. You should not participate. And just, just a brief example, we do, there are certain rules relating to, for example, voting on certain licenses and things of that nature if you hold a license. So it's a similar concept, but if you want a formal opinion, I'm happy to do it, but I'm going to need a little bit more information in terms of being able to commit that down to writing.
Corporation counsel, I think Alderman Williams was very clear on all the reasons why he thought I shouldn't vote on this and named every single one. So if you can look at that to have something written, that would be greatly appreciated moving forward. But because, due to that taking place, um, I will be recusing myself from voting on this tonight.
Those are, any second to the motion for discussion? Motion fails. Next item on the agenda is 2022-33326, an ordinance approving an agreement with Wood Environment.
Yeah, John just asked, what was the question? I don't think he knew what you was just asking.
If there's a second to discuss the motion regarding the Enos Park.
Normally, you second to discuss.
I'll second for discussion. Now, the, I think the motion was to remove from the table. Is that correct or bring it forward to debate?
To discuss.
Debate, yeah.
Was it to discuss or debate?
It's, it's for debate. I'll amend it to discussion if that's what's needed. I think we've got folks here that came to speak, uh, on this issue, and I think we should respect their, um, the fact they're here and, uh...
John asked, what was your motion, Alderman?
I'm sorry, I wasn't here at the time.
Sure.
So I'll make a motion for discussion.
I'll second that.
Been moved for discussion. It's been second. Any, um, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So the ordinance, uh, 2022-285, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with Enos Park Development LLC for purchase of the land and all improvements for 73 parcels of property located in Enos Park and listed on Exhibit A for an amount not to exceed I'd ask Michelle Ombi if she'd come forward and, uh, if you'd like to give a brief explanation of what we're trying to do here, um, and whoever else would like to make comments from the audience. But what we're trying to do is Enos Park's development's been at this for a number of years. Uh, with regards to this arrangement, the city would purchase the 73 parcels, and they'd be part of a, you know, a land bank per se. And the intent is to apply it, uh, for future development with the medical district, Enos Park, and, uh, the strategic plan that's, uh, we're in the process of making, and then the one that's currently in place with regards to Enos Park's master plan. So, Michelle?
Mayor, I'm not sure I have a whole lot new to add. Happy to answer any questions. The only thing I would like to note is when we had originally brought this proposal forward, um, the mayor had initially suggested using CDBG funds, and I know a couple of the aldermen had asked if there were alternative funding sources, and we had said we were open to that. So I believe one change that's been more recently discussed would be splitting the funding between CDBG and TIF, if that's the council's wish. Um, and as Alderman McMenamin indicated, in the meantime, I know some of you have probably been contacted by various groups. Uh, we had a joint meeting with the Community Foundation, the Mid Illinois Medical District, downtown Springfield, and, um, the Springfield Sangam and Growth Alliance, and we have a couple of folks here tonight from those organizations to speak on behalf, so I'd like to defer to them.
Yep. Uh, why don't we switch your to Kayla? Why don't you come up first? Is that who you're referring to? Kayla Graven and Ryan McCready?
Good evening again. Um, downtown Springfield Executive Board again made a vote on this, and we are in support of the Enos Park land ordinance. We are supportive of a controlled and strategic approach to Enos Park neighborhood. Um, and they will be a part of our master plan process for the downtown and medical district that is coming up shortly.
Any questions for Kayla? Ryan, if you wouldn't mind coming up?
Thank you. I appreciate you all taking the time to read the, uh, information that we sent. Um, I know that the city and Enos Park Neighborhood Association have a long relationship together. Uh, done a lot of activities together. A couple of things I'd just like to quickly draw to your attention is, uh, from my perspective, the Neighborhood Association has been very successful in its efforts of redeveloping, stabilizing, and, uh, moving the neighborhood, neighborhood forward. It's not an easy task to do, and I think we noted that, uh, 50, approximately 50 parcels have been able to be saved and redeveloped and, and put to the tax rolls back into helping improving that neighborhood. Second, um, even though that relationship has gone a long time, there's some recent developments currently that I think necessitate being able to gather these lots together and make this purchase. Uh, one is involving the Mid Illinois Medical District. Uh, they have received $250,000 in funding the sheer state budget to help start trying to spur residential development in the medical district. As you know, Enos Park and the medical district boundaries overlap. That's going to be a critical shot in the arm to help move this forward. Uh, one of the key things in development like that is property assembly, being able to get, uh, lots adjacent to each other with enough space to be able to, be able to do a development that you need to do. And this will help us run, help us avoid the risk that these parcels could get owned back into ownership of a number of different interested parties. It would make property assembly, uh, difficult for us. Second, the Growth Alliance, uh, provides staff support for the medical district, and we have been, the Medical District Commission has been very, very active in working with the Growth Alliance to market that medical district for development. We have talked to national site selection firms that are interested in beginning to market the medical district. Just another sign that things are turning around there, um, in that we have, we have opportunities to move forward. The last thing is what Kayla mentioned, uh, the Growth Alliance, downtown Springfield Inc., the City of Springfield, uh, Community Foundation, and the Mid Illinois Medical District are under, in the, in the middle, are starting now a new master plan for not only downtown and not just the medical district, but the whole area. Because even though they're separate and distinct areas, there's overlap. And if we plan this out correctly, activities and services in one of those areas can benefit and support the other one. But to be able to do that, we have to be able to paint this picture together. This will be a development plan. It's not a plan that's been done before. In fact, we made sure that we had a complete listing of all the plans at regional planning before we did the RFP for this plan. This is a development plan. This is the kind of plan that someone like me would take to a developer and say, look, our community looked at this area of, of town. This is the kind of development that we believe you can be successful in these areas in this way. And by doing that planning process, we avoid, hopefully avoid, difficult land use discussions, um, as development comes forward. So I would just like to bring to your attention those items now that I think are, are, are more recent and relevant in your decision about, uh, doing the purchase and securing all those lots with the Enos Park Neighborhood Association. So thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Really appreciate it. Is there any, uh, motion on that or just leave us discussion? Alderman Conley.
Thank you. And, uh, Ryan, I'm sorry, don't sit down, please. You were optimistic in taking off so quickly. Um, so, and that's good to hear, and obviously I would like to see Enos Park to be developed in a more comprehensive manner in conjunction with the medical district. Um, do you have any sort of a sense of a timeline for how that would happen?
It's...
And I, and I'm not going to hold your feet to this fire.
Right.
I just, because really what we're looking at right now is a significant increased burden to the city in terms of, really, I mean, for me, one of the biggest concerns is maintaining these properties. Um, you know, and, and I did ask, and, and, uh, you know, if, if Enos Park would be willing to partner with us on that, but obviously there are restrictions on, those are volunteers, right? There are restrictions on their time and efforts too, so I'm just concerned about what sort of a commitment we're, we're looking at for the city in that regard.
The plan, uh, the planning firm has been secured, and meetings are scheduled to begin later this month on the planning process. I believe that's about a 12-month project. Is that fair, Kayla? Yeah. About a 12-month project to get that done. But we, the Growth Alliance has already had interest from national developer and site selection firms about doing a, kind of like a master marketing of that medical district. So the plan itself is going to take some time, but the interest is already brewing. So the plan itself is going to take some time, but the interest is already brewing to develop in that area of the community.
And is that, is that development that you would prefer is delayed until your plan is, is completed, or is that development that can go on in conjunction with the, with, with your, this plan?
If the development came forward in an area that was a very logical fit for the kind of development they wanted to do, then it could go forward. If this requires some kind of big land use question, you know, if it requires a large change of a residential area to a, uh, a commercial area, those kind of, those kind of things have to wait for a plan. But if we can clearly see, you know, I mean, you know, from looking at zoning maps and things, all right, what they want to do is, it makes sense to do this here anyway. So I think those, I believe those two things can happen at the same time. Um, and developers, national developers are wanting to make decisions soon right now. We're in an inflationary environment, a rising interest rate environment right now. But, uh, there are a lot of industries that are expanding. Life sciences is one of them. Um, of all the things that came out of the pandemic that we didn't like, it, it did generate a lot of investment in that industry. So there are opportunities out there right now too, I believe.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alderman Williams.
Yeah, so how much money, uh, did they get, uh, for that grant?
$250,000.
And who got it?
The Mid Illinois Medical District. That was appropriated in the state budget that just went into effect July 1st.
And they couldn't sell these parcels to them since it's in their interests and they're a part of this deal? Instead of selling it to the city, sell it to them? Use that money to buy the parcels?
The med, the medical district was set up under a specific state statute, and I don't vote...
The word overlap is why I'm saying, well, if it's that overlap and the interest is the same, you're still getting the same goal.
I don't think the medical district can own property, is what I'm saying. The state statute that set the Medical District Commission up had specific rules in there for things the medical district can and can't do. So they're, they are not like a neighborhood association. They're not in a position to, to own property going forward.
So, so what are, do you know what they're going to do with that money?
My understanding is they're going to work with that money to attract residential development in the medical district. That's what the outline was of the money that was put in there.
I, I'm not understanding.
Well, they could provide incentives. Maybe there's a residential developer that comes in and says, I want to put a 12-unit, uh, apartment complex in this part of the medical district. Maybe hypothetically, the commission would be able to step forward and help with the water main tap for that development, or, you know, to help with, with something like that to offset some of the infrastructure costs to support the development. But they wouldn't be in an ownership position of property. They do, they don't, they don't, they're not, they're not just not set up to do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Those dollars are set aside for, you know, the medical district in itself, which isn't entirely into Enos Park, but it's for, you know, development or promotion of that area. I didn't know if Calvin Pitts wanted to say anything?
Good evening, counsel. My name is Calvin Pitts, and I am, um, here tonight, uh, just to express my, um, support for this ordinance. Um, I am a former board member of this association as well as a current resident and supporter. Uh, and I've witnessed the hard work, um, of this association throughout the years. Um, I understand that these, um, individuals, uh, we were all volunteers, and, you know, and I want to mention too that, um, our training program, uh, helped manage, uh, the, the, uh, cutting and, uh, the, you know, taking care of those properties for a couple of years or a lot of them, along with a lot of the other, um, people in our neighborhood, you know, and I know, um, that if these, if they are here tonight with this ordinance, I know that they need your help. Uh, I've seen them navigate. I've seen them, um, you know, get really creative in a lot of ways and do a lot of different things in that community for years. And, you know, to see them here now in this position, I know, uh, that it is definitely something, uh, that is necessary. And after viewing some of the past council meetings, you know, I understand, uh, and appreciate some of the stances that's been taken, but I, uh, I would like to say, you know, um, as, uh, a citizen here, um, a resident of Enos Park and, um, you know, knowing personally, uh, these individuals that are, are before you tonight, uh, I want to, um, let you guys know that, um, I understand, you know, your stance, but I, uh, I also understand the importance of forward momentum, you know, and I think that, um, you know, yesterday is gone, voting, you know, we can't do anything about that, but I do know, um, that, you know, we can, uh, help push this thing forward, and I think that, um, that would be the good thing, that would be the best thing to do, uh, for this neighborhood, for this city. You know, and I think, um, it's clear, you know, that it's going to take, take us all. It's going to take the citizens, it's going to take the neighborhoods, and it's going to take you, our city leaders, to work together and guarantee that all of our neighborhoods and people and them move forward and not backwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Alderman Williams.
Yes, uh, Calvin?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I mean, I'm amazed, uh, and I'm, I'm kind of, that's really good, you know, because you're standing up for them when they wouldn't stand up for you. Uh, you, you're, you're speaking from your heart and saying this is a good project and that, um, uh, whatever kind of debt you had or whatever that situation was, they kind of knew too. But they wouldn't stand up for you like you're standing up for them now. That's a concern for me. Before, uh, you guys are all under the same alderwoman. We have the same situation, and that vote went down not once but twice. Then it got paid and still no. So, so I'm still against this project on principle, and some of that's my ward, but on principle, because if citizens wouldn't act like this and hold each other accountable the way you're doing now, some of this stuff up here would stop. You are speaking for them, and that's commendable. They would not speak for you, and they didn't come up to speak for you. I don't know what changed your heart or, or what made your mind, and on top of that, they have a debt too. It's called taxes. They haven't paid the taxes on the land. They don't want us to talk about that or think about that or anything, but yet, these same people that are getting ready to vote held you, a black man, during rehabilitation as well to a different standard. That's not right, and, and I thank you for coming up and doing the commendable act.
Sure, and I, I appreciate that, Mr. Williams, and you know, I've had, uh, these conversations with these same individuals, um, you know, some of the same individuals, some of, um, you know, the council and, uh, the vote. I didn't understand, and I, you know, it's not, you know, it's not for me to understand, obviously, but, um, as it relates to my association and the members that are, we've had conversations and we just didn't, um, uh, see, um, I don't know, any, any benefit in it, in it at the time, uh, but I do, uh, want you to know that they do, uh, support, um, what I do, and I know, uh, it's, it's, you know, it's better. Uh, it wasn't, wasn't, uh, present at the time, but, um, I didn't call and I didn't ask, uh, you know, anyone to come by and, and say anything and, you know, but I appreciate you and I appreciate, uh, what you're saying, but I just wanted to share because I know as a community, as a city, you know, until we come together, we're going to have, uh, these issues, and, and it's going to never quit, you know, because somebody's going to say something that's going to, someone else is going to, you know, disapprove, and then nothing never gets done, and we're still, you know, hanging in the balance, all of us, and it doesn't make it better, you know? That's why I came, so, thank you very much.
I appreciate you seeing the big picture. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I just wanted to say, my, my, um, no vote is not solely based on Calvin or what he went through, but, but the, the totality and the facts of this, of this situation. You know, we've, we've already been here and, um, to, to help out, and, you know, that, that neighborhood has grown. There, there's other neighborhoods throughout our city that have tried and done this thing that we would not do this for, that we have not done this for. Um, there's people that take care of lots over in my ward consistently, and they call to buy them, and we don't sell them to them. We don't help them out with them. So, you know, this is really on fairness and, and, and what we need to do as a community and be fair to everyone. Um, aside from that, you know, I, I have a problem paying $4,000 a lot when we can pay $600 a lot, and we can still work with Enos Park just like we would work with any neighborhood association, um, or people of our city who's going to come to us and tell us what they want in our, in their communities. We listen to those things, so I don't think their, their, their opinion will go away with us, um, um, uh, buying those lots, because that's all we're going to do. They're going to go to the county, to the trust. We're going to be cutting them. I also have concerns on how many, how many lots we have. Not only lots, county lots that's in the trust, no one pays for them but us. Then the houses that we have to go cut, tho, those, those are unaccounted for as well. We have plenty of houses that people don't take care of, and we have to go cut every two weeks, every three weeks, and so on and so on. So this is going to put us, you know, these 73 lots will probably put us at like 750, um, properties to take care of, us alone, by ourselves. That's what we're going to be taking care of. And, and if we want to, you know, furthermore, that gives like 28 contractors, 35 lots, something like that, to, to cut, and my math's probably off, but it's a lot, you know? I cut every day, and, and to cut that many lots a month is what, is why, you know, uh, parts of our city look a mess, and adding to this is not a good, a good business decision for us as a city. Thank you.
The one thing I will say is, uh, over 100 of those lots were purchased from TSB Hope, uh, for the neighborhood of Hope. We bought that, the city bought that, and this council approved it. So it's a similar situation. I think what Calvin hit on is, uh, just as you expressed, Alderman Gregory, we want to turn around all the neighborhoods. And I really speak to his, uh, what Alderman Williams said is heart, and I think that's what Enos Park neighbors have done. They've been at this for a long time, that, back when I was a banker. Maryland Pyle started it. I went over there, had a neighborhood association meeting, we had the bank in there talking about housing, uh, things of that nature. Then they created, uh, you know, the development part, part of it, and they were at it for decades, decades. And so these 73 lots, they had dilapidated structures on them. They helped clean them up. And so now you have this canvas, and everybody can talk about TIF and everything else. TIF is like a farm field. You can have the clear field, you have the resources, but if you don't cultivate it, it's not going to grow. So we had Ryan McCready up here talking about economic development. He said it's ripe for growth. People are looking for the medical area because of COVID. Outside developers, just like we had just a minute ago, an outside developer wanted to bring millions of dollars in here. And then, so here's another opportunity where we can have the better footprint for them to invest in. And so we have another bite of the apple, and, uh, I hope, hope to God we don't turn it down again. Now, the taxes is another thing. Similar situation with TSB Hope, it's the same thing. It's going to go up to the tax sales. So instead of letting that happen and having outside investors come and speculate and buy from Florida and pick off a parcel and pay for it and let it sit, and the city pays to cut the grass, it's going to happen. So we've done this, and the reason we collectively had bought them up is because we did not want to have the same thing happen year after year, decade after decade. What's happened when I was treasurer? And the treasurer could tell you how, how much those outstandings are. They're just, it just keeps growing when you have these outside property owners let it go, and we cut the grass and we charge them, and it's like a vicious circle. So we have that opportunity to change it. The good news is we have a Harvard fellow that's going to help with our housing initiative, that, the holistic approach to housing, and they're going to focus on the east side. But we have this chance where Enos Park has worked hard to raise it to the level that it's at, and if you haven't done so, you should drive around Enos Park. You have some glorious structures that they rehabbed, and that's what we're trying to do with the Harvard fellow, the whole block restoration, is save our housing. But the other side of it is infill development. That's not going to be parcel by parcel. You're going to make it happen when you have this footprint available for developers that they can see that they don't have to invest in one parcel, they can invest in multiple parcels, and you have this workforce availability that wants housing. And you don't have to take my word for it. We've had this developer had, uh, said it tonight. We've had Ryan McCready said it tonight. We're ripe for development if we open up the door. Alderman Williams. Oh, you already did? Oh, sorry. Alderman Fugensi.
Yeah, um, I, I just wanted to talk about the, uh, condition of, uh, Enos Park. I know a lot of people are saying that it's, it's not really worth saving or not, not something that they can see an advancement in, but I'm old enough to remember that as a kid. Sorry. Believe me, I'm not crying because...
Oh, you're all right. Just take your time. You want some water?
The thing it is, that was a beautiful neighborhood at one time. Then it fell into disrepair, and then it came back, and it's on the way back now. It's, it's something that I think we need to do for the sake of the city. And, and to see some, something like this that has been developed or redeveloped and is, is on the way back to be thrown aside is just not something we should do. I think, I think it's a, a good thing to buy these lots and try and redevelop them. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Well said. Alderman McMiniman.
Yeah, I, I think that we need to support voluntary initiatives in our neighborhoods. Uh, here tonight, we've got Downtown Springfield Inc. saying yes, you know, help this situation. Alliance for Growth saying yes, let's help Enos Park. We've got Memorial Hospital Ted Curtis writing saying, let's help, uh, Enos Park. We've got Mr. Calvin Pitts, who has been an officer of that, of, uh, Enos Park, saying yes, let's help. I remember when Michelle Ombi, um, we lost her to this area of town because she used to be very active at the MacArthur Boulevard Association, and I remember before I was an alderman, I was so impressed that she had studied our code and knew how to, um, take more action with problem properties and so forth, and, uh, we lost her to Enos Park. She went over there and, and became an officer and an active volunteer, and I know others have, have made that switch too, to go to another part of our, our tipping point part of, that was worse than tipping point part of our city, Enos Park. It was, uh, on the downhill, and we, we have to help and support the comebacks, and this is an opportunity, and, um, you know, if, if this goes down, you know, and we've, um, the Form 30 went down tonight, I think, uh, we, uh, we need to really have a, a careful look at what, what's happening at the city council. That's all I got to say.
Alderman Gregory.
Boy, I'll tell you what. So when we first had this, 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 um, this ordinance come up, I said that I won't vote for TIF or CDBG. I think our city funds shouldn't be used in that. So I would, if we can, and, and Corporation Council, um, can advise us on this, I think we should take it out of ARPA funds, if we can, under the final rule for, for lots and stuff. If we can't, then I, I can't support it out of our city funds, but I think that's the only option that we have to do this, to, to get the lands. But I, but I will say, you know, when, when we do projects like this, I understand they, they worked, they worked hard over there, and I get that, but, you know, when you take out loans and do all of those things for TIF and know on its reimbursement, these are the risks that you run, anybody else. If Dominic Fu messed up on his project and take out a loan, we ain't going to pay it.
No, they ain't.
So, so I'm just saying, that American Rescue Funds, if, if somebody wants to support that, if that's even eligible, I would, I would support it to help move the neighborhood forward, but our city funds should not be used on this because they have not handled this right, and Judge Holmes, Judge ruled on that slap on her, slap on her wrist, but at the end of it, he said, no more TIF funds until their obligation is, is, is fulfilled. That's what he said. So, you know, and that's how I interpret it. Maybe people interpret it differently. I want to help the community, but, but we have to be fairness because we're going to open up a, a can of worms that we're, we're not always going to approve, and I'm just saying.
Alderman Conley. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. And Alderman Gregory kind of touched on some of my concerns. I'm personally not ready to vote on this tonight. I know right now we're just doing, it's just a motion is just for discussion, which is why I seconded it. I think we need to have a better understanding of funding options. I'm not comfortable with using TIF for a project like this. Alderman Gregory, you hit the nail on the head. And I will say, you know, I have supported other purchases to, of property for use in, with the community, community center, Alderman Gregory and your ward. And I think, you know, when we make those investments where we're buying, you know, buying these buildings and we're investing something into the community, those are important votes for us to take. So I'm not looking at this as a, does someone owe the city something? I'm looking, or the county. I'm looking at this as how do we best support investment in neighborhoods that desperately need it. And I did drive through Enos Park today. I went through twice. And, you know, I used to live actually just north of Enos Park. I've seen over the years the improvements that have happened. And I've seen, Alderman Gregory, I'm seeing improvements on your ward now too. And part of that is the fact that the city, the park district, the state, we're putting resources where they need to be. And I think that's critical. Yeah, it takes a lot of work. But I think, I think I would ask that we not vote, take any final action on this tonight because I have not seen any changes to the funding options, any explanation of, of how, how we're going to reconcile the fact that, you know, these properties were originally purchased using TIF dollars. There have been advances made, and I'd like a little, a more clear analysis of what's going on with that. It is a different situation than some that like Alderman Williams has brought up. This is not, at least in my mind. But I would ask that we get a little more information, Mayor, on the funding options that we have for this property with purchases before we take any final actions. Thank you.
Alderman McMinimum.
Just to follow up. Mr. Mayor, do you have an opinion about using the ARPA funds for this kind of a project?
Yeah, they can be used. Well, that's the beauty of the revenue replacement, it gives you flexibility. So in that sense, you can do the revenue replacement, which was pointed out earlier. So it'd fall under that initiative with regards to neighborhood redevelopment.
Will you support that amendment?
Sure.
Well, I'll make the motion that we...
Do we want, go to Alderman Donlin first, or, you can make the motion if you like?
I'll yield to Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Alderman. Mayor, thank you. I would support what Alderman, excuse me, Alderwoman Conley is suggesting, that we take a timeout and see what types of funding could be available. If we can reach a compromise and see if we can get something passed. But other than that, if it's as presented, I intend on voting no. So, thank you.
Alderman Repath.
I too want to hold this. I know Ms. Ombi's worked her tail off over there trying to get these things cleaned up, and there's nobody arguing that.
Right.
This is, this started off with taxpayers' money, and it's going to end with taxpayers' money. So we're paying for it twice. That's the, that's the phone calls I'm getting. How can we pay for this thing two times? I wish there was a magic wand, we could wave to take care of this. But taxpayers don't want to pay for this twice, and that's what's happening. I really think we ought to hold this and maybe come up with a better idea. Other than that, I'm going to have to vote no.
Alderman McMinimum.
Yeah, I think to say that we're paying for it twice doesn't understand what's happened here. Because during this last six years, we've had volunteers working for nothing. So we've gained the advantage of getting something for nothing. The city has gained the advantage of getting something for nothing. So I don't see the idea of that we're paying twice. When we use this money to get the lots, we may not be getting full fair market value out of that real estate that we're getting back. But we're getting pretty good real estate that we might sell, that will be money to the city. So we get this real estate, we pay for this real estate from Enos Park, and then eventually the city sells that real estate, we get compensated for what we just put out to Enos Park. It's a transfer of ownership. So hopefully we'll sell these lots with the medical district and the activity that the Progress for Alliance is doing, the Alliance for Progress, we'll come out of this okay. So we just got to be looking forward and not take a short-term look at this.
Alderman Repath.
Alderman, I disagree with you. I understand your passion for this, and there is passion in this room for this. But it is absolutely paying for it twice. We put the money up front to make the purchases, and now we're putting the money up to bail them out. And that's, that's double tax, and the taxpayers aren't happy about it.
I don't see it that way.
Any other discussion? Any motion?
We don't have the votes tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2022-326, an ordinance approving an agreement with Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions, Inc., that amends two previous professional services agreement and provides the engineering service in regards to the revision to the supplemental water supply supplemental environmental impact statement in an amount not to exceed $285,488 for the Office of Public Utilities. Chair Lynn entertained a motion, placed agenda number 2022-326 on final passage. It moved in second?
There's been no movement.
Is there any movement?
I'm sorry.
I think everybody's worn out.
Yeah, I was still starting. Can you repeat yourself?
Are you waiting for a second?
Are you making a motion?
Where we at?
It's with the supplemental water supply study.
Ordinance 2022-326.
2022-326. Is there a motion?
So move.
Been moving second. Any discussion?
We have folks here to speak about it, Mr. Mayor.
And thanks for sticking around, Don Hanahan and Don Davis. If you'd like to come forward.
Don Hanahan, 4981 Smith Road, Pleasant Plains. The city changed the whole purpose and need for building Lake Two to add recreation as a need. It wasn't ever there for 35 years. They added it. Federal law therefore requires proof of that need and proof that Lake Two is the best, the cheapest, and the least environmentally damaging way to achieve the recreational purpose. The statute requires consideration of all the alternatives to Hunter Lake. Need was supposedly justified by a study done about a year and a half ago. Y'all had copies of that. And it concluded with the jaw-dropping conclusion that not only do we need one Hunter Lake, we need four of them to meet the supposed ridiculous recreational need. How did they get that? They surveyed 600 people and came up with this conclusion. I laughed when I read it, so I waded into the study to find out, how do you get 12,000 acres of water need in this study? It's ridiculous. For example, this room is what, 45 by 45? Every swimmer that needs to swim, according to this study, needs an area twice the size of this room. That's how they get a need for 12,000 acres. It also says that every motorboat needs 50 acres, 50 acres. Every sailboat, 40 acres. Every fishing boat, 20. Every canoe, 10. Every kayak, 10. And not only does it need all this ridiculous amount of room, on top of all of it, they assume that any water surface area cannot be shared by more than one activity or more than one user in any 24-hour period. That's the kinds of ridiculous assumptions that they made to prove that there was this need. Worse, they didn't even go out and look at the existing facilities to see if they're overutilized. But I did. Weekend after weekend, I get on my motorcycle, I ride out to Lake Sanctus, I ride out to Jim Edgar Panther Creek, I go to the rivers, and I look on beautiful days. A couple weeks ago, 83 degrees on a Saturday afternoon, light breeze, there was not one boat that I saw on Lake Sanctus. I took pictures, I take videos, guess where I'm sending them? To the Army Corps. The author of the study never left his office to look at that, but I do. The Army Corps now says, okay, so let's assume for purposes of argument that there is some kind of a need. So now you need to spend $300,000 to prove that Hunter Lake is the cheapest, the best, and the least environmentally damaging way to meet this recreational need. So is another study going to prove that a whole new lake has to be built to accommodate this vast army of swimmers each needing 90 square feet to swim in? When the city closed its two public beaches, the last one in 2008, citing there's no demand for it as the reason to close it. Now we're going to do a study that shows, oh, there's this huge demand for swimming. Is another study going to show that tweaking Lake Springfield leases to allow more access to recreation is somehow more environmentally damaging or costly than building a whole lake? That it's somehow impossible to give people access to Horse Creek and Brush Creek? That it's impossible to create access to the Sangamon River at Riverside Park to expand opportunities for canoeing and kayaking? That the city can't use its private lake, its gravel lake, for anything other than a private club for special people instead of a public access? Again, I could go on with more and more alternatives that you're going to have to pay for to prove that Hunter Lake is the cheapest, that Hunter Lake is the best, and that Hunter Lake, that's going to destroy 3,000 acres of forest, is the least environmentally damaging. I'll close by citing a study that the city already paid for back in 1998 called the Booker Study. It did not look at recreational need, it looked at Hunter Lake and whether Hunter Lake is a viable recreational facility. And the conclusion of the study was, it's marginal at best. Why? Because of its construction and because of its intended use. The construction is going to leave all the forest standing. They're going to flood it. But then they're going to draw it down four to seven feet in an average year, eight to 12 feet in a dry year. And what's that going to do to boating, for example? You've got trees sticking up out of the water. What's it going to do when you create acres and acres and acres, hundreds of acres of mud flats? It's going to create access problems. So they concluded that the recreational value of Hunter Lake as it's proposed to be used is negligible. For 34 years, opponents of this project have been telling you, eight different city councils, five different mayors, that your desires and your dreams and your wants are not the same as a legal need. They're not the same as a legal need. And you can't prove that a legal need for this project exists when there's no need. You just can't prove that there's a need. They can't prove. Don's going to talk about water supply.
Time, time. Let's go.
Thank you.
That's it. I hope you stop wasting money on the project.
Okay, I'm Don Davis. I reside at 6363 Stagecoach Road in Pleasant Plains. I'm located in Gardner Township. I've been interested in this project since the 1970s. And I noticed since the power plant, units 31, 32, and 33 have been shut down, that here we are in August, start of August. According to the paper, we're at around the normal precipitation, and we're at or a little bit above full pool in the lake. When that power plant, those three plants shut down, the withdrawals of 10.9 million gallons a day of water coming out of the lake no longer come out of the lake. That's within 1.1 million gallons of your projected water need of 12 million gallons a day. And of that, three or five million gallons a day are total speculation, growth in industrial uses and wholesale uses. You know, as far out as 2065 planning year. It's silly. And you've got enough offset of water that's not going to be coming out of Lake Springfield that'd easily cover that kind of, that kind of growth, easily. You have no need for 12 million gallons a day lake, period. Now, in terms of when the city went out in 1965 and authorized purchasing land, and they purchased, to date, I guess, what, 7,138 acres or more or less? I don't know. The point is, the way you managed it, the way the city managed it, it privatized it by selling leases to private individuals. It kept the public out of there for recreational purposes. And now you turn right around and you discover the Illinois Recreation Access Program in conjunction with the Department of Natural Resources to trim deer populations around Lake Springfield. But you kept two to three generations of people out of that 7,000 acres. And that could have been a boon for this community. You could have access fees and, you know, recreational use. But you've got to gerrymander to the point where you've got, what, about 36 leases, and that blocks everybody out of the 2,000 acres that you haven't leased out, but it's mostly wildlife habitat. And so all these leaseholders have been able, you know, they can privatize, you know, they determine who goes in there to go hunting, for instance, or looking for wildlife, or fishing in the creeks. That's, you know, that's just a shame. But you call yourselves wanting to do water recreation. I'll tell you what, if you talk to somebody at the Department of Natural Resources, flat water recreation is not a nerve-shattering need. Hunter recruitment is, and it takes a lot of, a lot of space to safely have hunters, especially firearm hunters. But you're going to have archery hunting around several portions of the Lake Springfield to trim the abundant deer population, and that's the most practical way to do it. But let's, you should focus back on what a drought really does to the city system. It stresses the hell out of the treatment and distribution system. And I remember back in the 80s, 88, 2012 drought, of course, that was after they built the big standpipe tower. of course, that was after they built the big standpipe tower out by Cochrane Lane and I-72. But there was a point there where you couldn't get enough water to the west side of Springfield. You had no real conservation rates, you had no real tough conservation program for a So, you know, it's, it's poor management, it's indirected, you know, directed toward the wrong problem. And, you know, I hate to be lecturing, but when is this farce going to stop? What are you, I mean, is this a workfare program for consulting engineers? I guess it is.
Thank you. I don't know if Doug or Todd would like to come up and did have a question, but if you would like to add any comments. But with regards to the study that was referenced, who actually did that study?
The U of I did, the recreational study that he referenced, yeah. It was independently done by the U of I, that was without input from the utility. The Army Corps worked directly with the U of I to come up with those numbers.
And that was selected by Army Corps, right? U of I?
Yeah, through the selection process, right, yeah. But, I mean, I guess the key takeaway there is that it wasn't an influence study by the city of Springfield's professional staff. So, yeah, just a couple of things to address the Don's comments. I mean, the staff at the utility still is of the opinion that there's a yield deficiency problem in Lake Springfield during a severe drought. The numbers really haven't changed since we did our last deep dive in two thousand sixteen, seventeen on this. You know, we're not alone in that. Just as some point of history back in sixteen, the Illinois State Water Survey said Lake Springfield was classified as an inadequate, likely an inadequate water supply during a major drought. Our I E P A engineering surveys, so these are sanitary surveys that are done once every three years, continues to list a supplemental water supply as kind of a deficiency on our survey. Then, of course, we contracted with C D M Smith for that two thousand seventeen, I guess, demand projections, and they came up with, with a similar conclusion, that essentially Lake Springfield does have yield deficiency issues during a severe drought. You got anything to add to the yield?
Yeah, you know, the retirements of the, of the units have come up over the years multiple times, and I continue to say this from the start, this demand study started, they came to me, one of the most, you know, concerning issues is like, when are we going to retire thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three? And back in, you know, and that was probably two thousand sixteen, we kind of started talking about that. Right from the get-go, we looked at what the environmental regs might do, and we started out with, you know, let's pick it into twenty-twenty-eight, but for the study, we said, just assume that they're going to retire by twenty-twenty-five and do that work with the demand study. So what that shows you is that that demand study showed that there is still a need for water, additional water, even though thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three would be retired by twenty-twenty-five. We retired them just a little bit early, that doesn't really impact that, that demand at that point.
Yeah, so when you're materially projecting out fifty years to twenty-sixty-five, a few years retirement on the early side, it just doesn't really materially affect our projections. So, you know, and some other things, you know, the industry trend is towards regionalized water supplies. So our demand will grow in the future, it's really difficult to predict with precision what it will be, but, but that is the trend, not only here but nationwide.
Just one more thing too, Mayor, you might probably remember this fondly. When we did the initial supplemental, supplemental environmental impact statement, and then with the Army Corps, we revitalized that in two thousand fifteen timeframe, we did a federal registry notice in it had recreation as a component. Now, we argued with the Corps for a couple of years, pretty well-known that we were in disagreements on the interpretation of that. So eventually, we had to then follow up with a need study and go through all this process. So that's kind of what's brought us back to this, to where we are today. But it's always been there, at least for the revitalization of this permit process.
Right. Alderman McMinnum.
Yeah, you know, we can look to experts and we hope the experts are right, but the facts are that, you know, if you go back thirty years, the demand study said that the water usage would go up like this, and then the next water, and it was wrong, and the next water study said our usage would go up like this, you know, not so severely, and they were wrong. And the next one said it'll go up like that, not so severely, it was wrong. Every one of them has been wrong. Our water usage was flat for about twenty years, and it's been declining. And as was mentioned, it's declining more significantly now because we've eliminated units one, two, and three, which were causing maybe twenty percent of our water usage. So this is a true case of putting, throwing good money after bad money. We should have never spent a million dollars for Woods. I think there were four of us on this council seven years ago when we gave a million dollars to this company, Woods, and they said, it's a slam dunk, we'll get it done for you, we'll get the approval from the Environmental Protection Agency and the Corps of Engineers, and we'll get this done. And we keep throwing them more money, more money. Now it's, you know, another two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We've got to learn our lesson. But here's the most important thing, I don't think our residents want our water rates to double. I don't think our residents want our water rates to double. Seven years ago, they said it'll cost with financing a hundred and fifty million dollars to build another lake. Now with the, you know, the new construction costs, where are we at? Two hundred million, two hundred and fifty million? We just got to take a realistic look at this and say, okay, thirty years ago, we really did think we had a problem, but the problem never developed. Our usage was flat for twenty years, it's been declining the last five years. So we can give Woods more money, but I think the outcome is going to be the same as what we've been seeing. And I think the Corps of Engineers is doing a good job on this because they're, they're saying, hey, wait a minute, city of Springfield, do you really think there's a recreation need? And furthermore, you know, ninety percent of Springfield residents don't have a boat. Who are we going to build this second lake for? Who's going to, who's going to use it? The ten percent? We're going to spend two hundred million dollars of city money for a recreation opportunity for the ten percent that can afford to be on the, on the water after we don't have a beach for our own people on the water? So that's where I'm at, folks.
Yeah, I, so, you know, one thing to keep in mind here is although you're right, the projections haven't gone up as we might have expected in the seventies, and those largely do some changes in plumbing and, and things being a little tighter out in the distribution system, you have less leakage and things like that. We've instituted all the water efficiency features and kind of rolled that program out, that's helped as well. We have the inclining rate structure to encourage conservation, so we've done all those things. We've modified the South Fork Pump Station, that, that operating procedure to kind of try to maximize that resource. So we've done all those things. But the thing to keep in mind is this is during a drought condition, you know, we're planning out for a hundred-year drought condition, which is an extreme condition. And although you can say, hey, the projections haven't gone the way you would have expected them in the seventies, our peak day of record was still back in two thousand twelve, and it was the peak by a lot. It was forty point five million gallons or so on that particular day. So although what you're saying, Alderman, it has some truth to it, when you have these peaks, we still have the population base out there, and it has expanded, and the trend is going to be to continue towards regionalization, and this water system will, demand will increase for this water system over time.
Yeah, and just to give a little history with the Army Corps, these are the hoops of bureaucracy we have to jump through. Because originally, when we, in two thousand fifteen, we went to D N R, they signed the agreement right out there because we were going to not build on the lake, they liked that aspect, so it was recreational, and we met with the Army Corps right there in Mayor's conference room. There's three or four of them from the Army Corps, and they said, we really like how it meanders, we could see how the recreational value is, we put it in there. But the bottom line is, you have to have a secondary source of water, backup source of water. And Todd can tell you how many backups, we're, Chatham's backup, but we don't have a backup.
Yes.
And we've had to supply water well over ten times probably to them since I've been in office, and so otherwise they go under boil order. And then the other part of it is, with regards to the backup, that's what it's all about. So we've asked the Army Corps, what's the options? And building a fifty-mile pipeline to Havana's not an option. And so, you know, we've, I've said this before, it took us fifty years to go just Eleventh Street to U I S, so there's no way you can go fifty miles on Havana Pipeline. And so that's where we went back to the recreational aspect because the Army Corps made us do it. And so that's, we've argued that point, wasted time. But the bottom line is, when we had that initial discussion, it was because of changing ideas, as Mr. Hanrahan had said, because changing administrations, that's why I told him, I said, Mayor, change administrations, you know, they have different philosophies, one might pursue it, one might not. We buy a gravel pit, and then they said, that's not viable, and, and they changed, the Army Corps changed the direction based on the non-commitment of the city council to get the backup water source for the city of Springfield. And that's what we made the commitment to get, is a backup water source, because we don't have one. And Todd's right, look around the country. You know, if you don't think there's going to be a water shortage, or if you don't think there's going to be water issues in the future, science will tell us differently. Because it is going to be a great need, the communities, when we talk about growth, the ones that have an ample, efficient water source are the ones that are going to grow and thrive. Alderman Gregory.
So my question is, and I talked to the guys a little bit, but do we anticipate this being the last payment to close this, this chapter on this? I'm just, I've got to be real, because if you come back and you ask me for three out of about...
It is a good question, it's a valid question. We anticipate it being the last piece to this S C I S process. Can't guarantee that, obviously. Anybody that's been around this process and dealt with the Corps and some of these permitting issues would certainly understand that we are not in complete control of it, but yes.
No, I'm just saying, if this passes tonight, I would probably advise them that they would try to get it done, because I can tell you the appetite for, from what I hear around the councils, not to keep paying for studies on studies on studies for this, for this thing, it's going to come to a head sooner or later, and we're not going to give it. So then we'll be, you know.
Understood.
All right, thank you.
Alderman McMinnum.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, let's not bring up the pipeline to Havana because we've got Lake Sanctris out there that was a cooling lake for the power plant over there, and that power plant is closing. And we've got some opportunity to get a secondary, if we need a secondary source, I mean, we're actually, we've got a secondary source, which is the South Fork, the Sangamon River, do we need a tertiary source? You know, that's a viable option, and, you know, we should spend some of this two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars to spend some money to do some legal research and communication with Dynegy, the current owner of the power plant there, what's the name of the power plant? Kincaid, thank you. We need to do some work to see what are options there at that lake, the ownership of the lake, the, the, the water rights from that water that will no longer be used by that power plant. So that's, we've got to look for what's efficient and what's frugal.
So, I mean, so Chapter Two of this S C I S document, the Corps is going to look at five different action items, or screen five alternatives, including no action, what happens if we do nothing? They're going to look at new surface water reservoir, which is obviously something like Hunter Lake, a hybrid, which is a groundwater and surface water system, existing surface water sources, and dredging a Lake Springfield. So they're going to ferret out all those options as they go through the selection process.
Good, that's really good to hear.
Yeah. Alderman Repath.
You know, thirty years ago, Alderman, I mean, Mayor Langfeller is where this started, and here I am, five mayors later, and we're still dealing with it. So it goes from one Langfeller to the other, hopefully this is the end, Jim.
Yeah, hopefully. Any other questions or comments?
So just from...
Alderman Purchase.
Thank you. So just from my understanding, because when we do a lot of talking, sometimes I get lost, but you just named the action items that they will basically be giving us to move forward with, right?
Those are the alternatives they will screen against our purpose and need, yes.
And then, once, once they're done and they bring those forward, then what do you all do?
Well, so it's a process that is expected to conclude in the winter of twenty-three is what the Army Corps gave us for a schedule. But there'll be opportunities along the way to provide draft comments to the S C I S that's produced, and then a final document will be produced and will be presented to council.
So this does sound like it's the last one.
We hope so, yes.
Knock on wood.
Yeah.
I will say just about, you know, when you're talking about looking at demand, you know, when you're trying to figure out what the anticipation might be, you don't know what's going to come either. And what I mean by that is that what, what, what business, what company is going to come to the area? You know, we just saw that Embry-Cair got their air permit approved, so there's, you know, another two or three hundred thousand gallons of water that we'd be selling to them. So you, you take those kinds of things into anticipation, and, you know, these are the kinds of projects that we're dealing with, like when you're talking about a secondary water supply, you know, you want Springfield to grow or not, those are the kinds of things you think of as, as leaders and debate and figure out what you want to do with the city.
And the biggest issue is the consequences are catastrophic, right? So if, if we run out of water, you know, business shuts down as we know it, there's different areas, I'm not going to say in the Midwest currently, but if you look at what's happening in the Southwest, like Lake Mead and areas like that, right, those individuals talk about what happens if we run out of water out there, I mean, large population bases move, right? There isn't an alternative, it's not like we can go to a Chatham or somebody else and get an adequate supply of water if we don't have it at our raw source in Lake Springfield.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion vote yes, opposed vote no, the voting is now open.
This thing like this.
And the motion passes six voting yes, three voting no. Next item on the agenda is twenty-twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Donovan.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion for an ominous vote on agenda items twenty-twenty-two, three-thirty-two through three-thirty-five.
Second.
The move in second to make an ominous vote for twenty-twenty-two dash three-three-two through twenty-twenty-two dash three-three-five and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Sorry, Alderman McMinnum.
Yeah, I'm okay with the motion, I just want to talk about the ordinances.
Opposed? Now I'll read them into first, is that right? Next item on the agenda is twenty-twenty-two dash three-three-two, an ordinance approving the reappointment of H. Edward Kramer, P E to the Mechanical Commission. Agenda number twenty-twenty-two dash three-three-three, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Ryan Crook to the Mid-Illinois Medical District Commission. Twenty-twenty-two dash three-three-four, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Joseph Hurwitz to the Mid-Illinois Medical District Commission. And agenda number twenty-twenty-two dash three-three-five, ordinance approving the appointment of Betsy Adollar to the Springfield Convention and Visor Advisory Board. Chair Luntanion motion to place those agenda items on final passage.
I move. Second.
The move in second, discussion? Alderman McMinnum?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, regarding Ryan Crook to the Mid-Illinois Medical District, I believe he was a resident of Springfield at the time this appointment was originally made. Meanwhile, in a conversation with him today, he now lives in Leland Grove, and he believes so strongly in residency that he's prepared to circulate a petition among Leland Grove residents to put the question on their ballot whether they'd like to join Springfield. And I think that's a great idea, and I, and so I'm going to support his, his appointment. I can't say the same thing for Mr. Hurwitz, he doesn't live in Leland Grove, and he hasn't made a commitment to circulate the petition to annex Leland Grove to Springfield. I do think, Mr. Mayor, you know, I think you are not bound maybe by what our ordinance says that you got to appoint a resident, but you've got four appointments, and when you give us two that are non-residents, you know, you're kind of against the spirit. But you're, I think you're kind of in the spirit of Mr. Ryan But you're, I think you're kind of in, in the spirit of Mr. Ryan Crook because he's going to try to help us out. We'll see how far that goes.
When Joe Hurwitz, I think, he was on the board before it was, we passed that portion of the commissions regardless of that, so.
So in conclusion, Mr. Clerk, I'm a yes for all of these that are on the omnibus consent or whatever we're doing here, the debate. But I'm a no for Mr. Hurwitz, which is Twenty Twenty-Two dash Three Three-Four.
Noted. Alderman Williams?
So, well, that went a long way with me, Joe. You know, I'm, I'm the residency person, so. But I did look at some things myself. And so the governor has so many appointments, the mayor has so many, same county chairman has appointment, I think. But I thought we asked the corporate council to look into that and tell us about this particular commission as far as residency.
And I did circulate information this afternoon to everybody, to Tim, to pass out. And the Medical District Commission is a state entity. It is created by the state. It's actually subject to, which I was surprised to find out, actually Court of Claims. So they're actually a state-created body. They are not a city board or commission. And they're not subject to the requirements of our city code. They are subject to the requirements of the state law. The state law does not place any restrictions regarding residency except two additional appointments were added in oh-seven for the governor. And those particular two are limited to five particular counties, which I thought was kind of interesting, not the entire commission, but just those two. So the residency requirement that we have for city boards and commissions does not apply to this state entity. Since the appointments are created by state law for the mayor, by the governor, and also by the chairman of the county board.
So, and, and, and I'm fine with that. I mean, I know the gentleman, I just like being consistent. And a lot of times I think we operate in a way on who we know or who we like and don't like on these kind of things. That's why I wanted clarity on it. I, I also know this mayor, the governor, had a vacancy. So I thought, well, if he stepped well liked by this commission, use one of the governor's vacant spots and, and, and we could, we could take care of it that way. You know, I, I'm with the majority of whatever we want to do tonight. But I do want to say to the council on this kind of a thing, you know, when these boards and com... We have to be consistent. And I don't think we've been operating true to our own rules at times. Now, in this case, this, the state thing is saving us because it would be interesting if it would have came back the other way, what, really, what we would have done. Thank you.
Alderman Repath.
I, I agree with Alderman Williams. And Corporation Council hit it right on the head. These two appointments really are not resident-driven. And they're not going to get two better candidates than, than Ryan Crook and Joe Hurwitz. They both are excellent candidates for this. And they're, they both, even though living Leland Grove, have Springfield's best interests at heart. So I would ask for support of those two candidates.
Does Metzger live in Leland Grove?
I'm sorry?
Did you say Metzger lives in Leland Grove?
Hurwitz...
I mean, I'm sorry, Hurwitz.
Plains, didn't he?
He lives in Plains, Plains.
I think he lives outside the city limits, but he used to live the lake.
Yep. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
So you got me a no, Mr. Clerk, for the one of them?
Yes, I have that noted.
And the appointments pass, eight voting yes, none voting no, with the exception of seven voting yes, one voting no on Hurwitz. Chair Luntanian Motion to Suspend with the Rules and, oh, I'm sorry. Next item on the agenda was Twenty Twenty-Two dash Three Five Five. We'd ask for a motion to withdraw. The move in second, any discussion?
Which one is that, Mr. Mayor?
That's the cannabis one. Petition for cannabis. It's, we were trying to hit the timing, but we made it up with a first reading. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair Luntanian Motion to Suspend with the Rules and Place on First Reading, Agenda Number Twenty Twenty-Two dash Three Five Six, An Ordinance Authorizing a Sponsorship Payment of twelve thousand dollars for the Springfield Mile to be held September third through the fourth, twenty twenty-two, for the Office of Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So moved.
Moving second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair Luntanian Motion to Suspend with the Rules and Place on First Reading, Agenda Number Twenty Twenty-Two dash Three Five Seven, An Ordinance Authorizing a Sponsorship of Payment of ten thousand dollars for the Old Capital Blues and Barbecue Fest to be held on August twenty-sixth through twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So moved.
Thank you.
The move in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair Luntanian Motion to Suspend with the Rules and Place on First Reading, Agenda Number Twenty Twenty-Two dash Three Five Eight, An Ordinance Authorizing Execution of a Contract with Downtown Parking, Inc. for Purchase of the Land and All Improvements Located at Fourth and Washington Street, P I N fourteen dash thirty-four point zero dash one zero three dash zero two four, in an amount of one hundred thousand dollars in closing costs and the amount of five thousand dollars. And for a total amount not to exceed one hundred five thousand dollars for the Office of Public Works.
So moved.
The move in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair Luntanian Motion to Suspend with the Rules and Place on First Reading, Agenda Number Twenty Twenty-Two dash Three Five Nine, An Ordinance Accepting Proposals and Authorizing the Execution of Contract Number F D twenty-three dash zero five dash thirty-nine for the Purchase of Fire Equipment for a Total Amount Not to Exceed nine hundred forty-seven thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars and four cents for the Springfield Fire Department.
So moved.
The move in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And the last one is the Chair Luntanian Motion to Suspend with the Rules and Place on First Reading, Agenda Number Twenty Twenty-Two dash Three Sixty, Resolution Referring a Petition to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission for Public Hearing in Consideration Proposing an Amendment to Chapter one fifty-five, Sections one five-five point four nine six of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to Cannabis Organizations Modifying Separation Provisions.
So moved.
The move in second, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Gregory.
So I guess I would have a point of inquiry or a point of information with Mr. Zirkel. So if I wanted to amend, amend this, do, do I have to put this in as a new ordinance? It would just be a section, another section, one fifty-five, four ninety-two?
This, this is a resolution referring a petition. It goes through the normal process to committee and back to the council, you know, for referral. So it would be subject to amendment. In other words, someone could bring an amendment if it, if the council so choose.
Would it be proper to do that now or send that to you?
At committee or when it, because remember, this is simply adding it for first reading, no action for tonight.
All right, thank you, sir.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed for Agenda Item Twenty Twenty-Two, Three Fifty-Eight, there's no funding source included on the ordinance sheet. If we could please have that updated before next week, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Alderman McMenon.
Going back to the question that Alderman Gregory posed regarding the cannabis, it's going to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission, correct?
Yes, you may recall, just very briefly...
So Mr. Alderman Gregory could attend one of those hearings and offer amendments at that point, is that correct?
You can also, first reading. This is referring the petition, if you recall, has to...
We can strengthen or modify before we send it to Regional Planning Commission.
Yes, and recall, it goes to the planning, the planning zoning. Then it comes back to the council for final action. So this is just initiating...
I understand.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business coming before the city council?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to point out, somebody mentioned that our system wasn't working earlier when they did the presentation. So just want to point out that it is working. It's a state-of-the-art piece of equipment. Sometimes some of the operators may have some difficulty that we need to help them with, but it is working. Thank you.
Alderman Conley.
Oh, Mayor, that was from...
Oh, that's the last one, okay.
Thank you.
I, I raised my hand.
Very good. Alderman, or Alderman McMenon, you have anything or not?
Negative, nothing.
Alderman Purchase.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I really enjoyed the National Night Out within my ward. And I did have a concern, though. And Ennis Park, they could not afford to do the insurance, so they had to move the bounce house over to the church to bring it off of the park lot. And I just got questions about the city maybe helping with some of the funds for the future because it is a, a city event that's been going on, I think, since I was a toddler.
Yeah, we checked that out, but it'd be even better if the park district covered.
Or the police.
But we'll, we'll check it next year.
Yes, and so that was my first thing I wanted to say. And my second thing was while we were out there, there was some concerns about the homelessness over on the corner of Fifth and North Grand. Quick and Easy has had some issues. I have met with them. And they're migrating across the street, but I can't tell. Or can somebody clarify for me? They're not on the private property, but they're on the city property from the sidewalk to the street. And they're just starting to hang out there. Like I don't want it to turn into a tent city. And so what can we do about that?
Well, you can't encroach the roadway if they're in the median. And so it's, you know, it's a safety aspect. If they're falling into the street or into the street, then they can be moved from that perspective. But I leave that up to police chief or corporation council. But that's always been my issue, is having anybody in the medians, regardless who they are.
And we can't tell because we...
They also cannot block like sidewalks or things of that nature.
Well, I can tell you that I've been driving by there every day, Corporation Council, and they're not blocking the sidewalk. They're literally staying on the grass. Or they're sitting on the curb where their feet can be in the streets.
Alderman, I will tell you, I drove by that today and there were people, literally, there was someone sleeping on the sidewalk.
You might have just caught them in that moment, but I've been trying to, you know, go by there every day just to see what's going on.
Hi, Chief.
Good evening.
You waited all this time to come up here?
Good morning.
Thanks for sticking around.
Yes, sir. Alderman Purchase and I had a good conversation about that. And we do have a meeting with Quick and Easy, just really to touch on that particular area. And we met one of the residents that lives nearby and he voiced his concerns. And I know that Officer Newman, as well as Shannon Allen, have worked extremely hard up in that area and have identified some of the folks and are working to get them, you know, placed or whatnot in some housing and some social services. So we'll continue to, to look into that and see what we can do to rectify that problem up there. And I believe the strip mall area does have a no trespassing agreement with us. So most folks up there are certainly cooperating with us, as far as the business owners are concerned.
And I do want to acknowledge that when constituents call me, Officer Newman, they are going over there, that team is going over there and they're addressing those issues. But we, we don't have that timeframe to, to sit over there all day. Now, what I will say, that I've encouraged a conversation with Chief Scarlett. Quick and Easy has a substation that they will allow us to be in free of charge, where we can have some presence over there. And it's a major concern when I have noonings talking about that they want to leave and you have a robbery that happened at a bank, you have a robbery that happened at a Family Dollar, and it's becoming a trend.
That's not homelessness. That's not homelessness. I don't like, I don't like this. I don't like this conversation. People have the right...
Can I finish?
People have the right to stand on the city segue as much as they want, as long as they're not bothering nobody or breaking no laws. See, see...
I don't do that to them.
We really have to, we got a whole building...
If you would have let me finish and not interrupted me.
Whatever.
Don't whatever me. Let's have some respect up here, Alderman.
Yeah, I am.
No, you're not.
Respect for people too.
Alderman Purchase has the score.
He doesn't have to like the conversation, but what I was saying was there's a mixture of things going on. I started off, and if you haven't drove over there, you should.
Man, please, I got areas that are...
I'm not a, I'm not a man.
Both of you direct your comments to either the chief or myself. Thank you.
Well, I want to address that I'm not a man neither.
Yes, I both of you. Alderman Gregory.
Yes, so my, my situation, since we're on homelessness, we, we just received a, a report for a continued care that won't be done till September. So that brings me to a very important point. Where are people going to stay for the winter? We're tearing down a quarter of the Salvation Army building right now. You know, meadows laying out there, that is a, a safety hazard, you know? So, so I, I think that we have to come up with some type of plan of what we need to do with this. So when I'm, you know, I've talked about, I've been on this council for three years and I've talked about homeless people over drinking, doing drugs and everything else over in our ward. And we work with them, we go over there, and we just now started to clear that area. But what we have to understand is there is a very fine line between cutting people's rights and, and, and doing that, you know, versus they can be out there. Just the same thing I heard us talking about downtown, about people on the sidewalks. We want them to move along because everybody, no, they don't have to move along. I can stand outside on that sidewalk all night long, as long as I'm not bothering nobody or breaking no law. And that's what we have to understand, even about our homeless people. What should happen, since everybody has a great relationship with the hospitals and that's all we stinking talk about, I, we should be out here with them. I, I should see twelve white coats out here with them, twelve people out here with them every stinking day until we resolve the problem. That's what we should do. But we don't do that. So, so we complain about this problem, they are, they are not bad people. Not bad people. And I get upset like this because I got a family that's homeless. And when we go and we talk about robberies and all that, and in the same context of homelessness, most of those people aren't doing that. It's people was making bad decisions. And then our, our police have enough to do to run around and chase them around all day just for standing out there, just for sleeping out. Send someone else. Because all it's going to do is cause a bad problem between the police and the homeless that we don't want. That's all, that's my point. So that's point one. We, we just released a cannabis business grant. I get calls every day, if we can please get some information to those people of when we're going to release these grants and when we're going to help people move forth. I think those things are very important. We spoke on our community revitalization grant earlier. We do need to try to get that out to the people. The reason why we came up with that, me and Alderman Williams worked on that grant, is because we wanted to get the communities involved, just like what Ennis Park is doing, just like some of our, we wanted to get the communities involved to help us out with the law, to help us out with the communities. Because we need help to make our communities look better everywhere, you know? And, and, and that's really my, my spiel. I'm passionate about it. I, 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 I feel like there's boundaries with homelessness, but we have to be careful on how we characterize them. Or else we never, they always get a stigma on them, and I don't like that. Thank you.
Mayor, can I address just one point?
Sure.
I would like to address Alderman Gregory's point one. And I couldn't agree with you more that certainly law enforcement is here to do our part as it pertains to enforcing ordinances and laws. And we now have people in place that can, can help out with the homelessness situation as far as our homeless team outreach coordinator. And, but homelessness is a community-wide problem that we all, as a community, need to work together to try and solve. And I couldn't agree more that we're certainly willing to do our part, but, but the whole issue can't necessarily befall upon our shoulders. So I'd just like to echo those sentiments, so, thank you.
Alderman Williams?
I'll just say that homelessness is everywhere, in all of our wards, in Ward Three as well. I don't expect the chief to babysit them and, and, and do the things that I constantly hear about, again, Ennis Park, the favorite of Springfield. You know, the two-way street, Mayor, the two-way street that's approved already. But they, we need to have a meeting because we don't like it from this street to this street in Ennis Park again. These are the things I'm talking about that make it very hard to work with all the other neighborhood associations when that particular neighborhood association, which is one of mine, I'm a part of it, constantly get this favorite, favoritism-type treatment from the city in some kind of form. If you change the streets and it's a two-way street, it's a two-way street. And now they got, well, from this street to this street, from Dodge to Carpenters, we, we don't like it. And we don't, we have to stop that kind of stuff. Once we make a decision and this is what we doing in the city, that's what we doing. And it just stacks up, it just keeps stacking up. All the way to where Alderman left before I could tell her,
I could tell her, but she's no different than the rest of us that's got them standing out there. She can't, I got people calling me saying, well, if Keisha can have the police escorting and doing, now how can we? I got Quick and Easy's, too. I got some of the same stuff, so I just want us to be careful on how we're utilizing the Police Department Chief and, and addressing that, because Sean has a point. We've been dealing with a lot of that stuff out there with them to take care of it, and not using the police because we know what that can cause. Or all it takes is one incident of mishandling them wrong because they mentally ill or, or, you know, there's some kind of situation. Now we got our own, you know, disaster on our hands. So I just want us to consider that, Mayor.
Yeah, I think what Alderman Purchase was pointing out is what happens if things perpetuate. You know, because I've heard all council members say, when you have people hanging out at places, other things happen. Doesn't matter if they're homeless or who they are, you know? And that's what her point was. And now it starts out, and then there's a robbery here or there, and it's just, we want to stop the domino impact on criminal activity regardless of where it's at. And so I think everybody's in agreement with that. With regards to favoritism, if you call decades, you know, it's past decades, probably 30, over 30 years, where one ways to two ways, that's been around a long time. So that's not preferential treatment. With regards to the other one, it is, what's changed is the YMCA's been out there just for a couple of years now. And that has changed the parking. We've heard about it, because Juan Warcha, is there a parking problem out there at the Y? You go there quite a bit. It's in the neighborhoods, right? Yep, yep. So we want it safe, so Public Works will work to make sure it's safe. But we are going to do the one way to two ways and figure a way to work through that. But the whole intent is to connect Grand, South Grand to North Grand, change it to two-way. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman McMinimum.
You know, Roy, Ennis Park Neighborhood Association didn't contact me about that two blocks. It's the very end of the, what would become two-way, which is now one-way. A 76-year-old man contacted me who goes to the YMCA six days a week, and he observed a potential safety hazard, and he wanted it to bring it to the attention of the City Council. And that's all that happened. I had no coordination with Alderman LaKeisha Purchase on it. He called me yesterday, and that's what we're supposed to do. It's a public forum where we try to alert those that need to know about something. In this case, it was our Public Works Director and the Traffic Engineer. So I don't see there's a, needs to complicate this into some kind of favoritism or conspiracy. Give me a break.
Yeah, well, I'm looking at it in its totality, I'm looking at it in its totality of, of that particular section of my ward and what I see and what I know compared to my other neighborhood associations. And I maintain that there is. Right now, I still can't find another one that got $250,000 a year in tip money for X amount of years. They're the only ones. So again, there is some form of, that at one time they was the favorite child or whatever you want to call it. Maybe it's because they're next to the medical district, I don't know. But I'm not going to sit there and act like that area is treated like everybody else because it is not.
Is there any other unfinished business?
Can I say something, Mayor?
Is it pertaining to what?
Yes.
The homeless?
Yes.
Okay, real quick.
Okay. Now, my name is Brett, you know what it's more, everybody know who I am. I stay in Ward Five. I've been over there, over there at Quick and Easy. Right now, I got two homeless people living in my house. Y'all always talking about helping the homeless. The city do help the homeless. But if you want to help them homeless more, I want some of y'all open that, y'all houses up and let them live with you. Because one, I got, I don't know when I'm going to get evicted, because I got two people living in my house right now, and only supposed to be, only body supposed to be there is me. And I took in two homeless peoples, and plus, I let two people sleep on my back porch. Now, I used to be one of them. Y'all helped me. Let's find a way that we can help them and stop knocking them down. Because one thing you got to realize is this, them homeless people might got an addiction, but some of them is very highly intelligent. You got plumbers, you got naturists, business owners, all on the streets. And y'all talking about helping? Open the doors to y'all house and let them in there. Because I know that while they been living with me, they helps me out a lot. Clean up, keep the yard clean, take care of their responsibility. That's a pickup. Don't downgrade homeless peoples. That's the only reason why I can't, because this needs to stop. Yes, I listen to all the memes at home, but we need to step up as a city and stop knocking each other down, because nobody is bigger than God. And we got to learn that. Open y'all doors, and I see you, y'all will see a better, a better person.
Thank you. Unfinished business? We have the Levin Concert Series tomorrow night, so hopefully people can go out and enjoy it. And then the Horseshoes, I think it's their last two home games, is Thursday and Friday at 6:30. Friday's Robin Roberts bobblehead day. Any new business? This Saturday is the Powerlight Abe Lincoln Car Show with the parade Friday night at, I believe, at 5 o'clock from Horseman Parking Lot going out tonight.